Half a day, welcome. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today is Thursday, February 3, 2022, and the time is 2 o'clock PM. Notices for this virtual public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and main media broadcasting outlets on Thursday, Jan- January 27, 2022, and again on February 1, 2022. The notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on those same days. The meeting will be hosted by the legislature staff, and the host will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by the chair. I ask that individuals testifying, please identify yourself for the record before you speak, because this will be transcribed. And, uh, please keep yourself unmuted until that time. I mean muted until that time. All right, so we've got three agenda items for today. Bill 146-36 LS, Bill 238-36 COR, and Bill number 127-36 LS. I'd like to thank my colleagues in the public for attending today's hearing, beginning with Senator Frank Blass Jr., Senator Telo Taitiwi, Senator Jim Moylan, Sutus Masi colleagues for being here. All right, so we will begin with our first agenda item, which is Bill number 146-36 LS. I will ask Senator Blass, who is the sponsor, to introduce that bill and to please read the title.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for all who are here today to testify on Bill 146-36. And I also want to thank my colleagues, Senator Taitiwi and Senator Moylan, for joining just as well. Madam Speaker, Bill 146-36 LS is an act to create a new chapter, 25 of Title I Guam Code Annotated, to establish the Guam Criminal Law Procedure Review Commission for the purpose of updating Title VIII and Title IX of the Guam Code Annotated. Madam Speaker, the introduction of the bill came as a result of the conversations that I've had with primarily members of the Attorney General's Office and several attorneys who may are in the same building that I occupy. Of some of the concerns of that the criminal laws and the procedure used to be able to prosecute or to work, I mean, of the laws, in some cases may be outdated and may need some amending, if you will. And I feel that this bill is sort of putting together those individuals, the subject matter experts in these fields of criminal law and criminal procedure to form a commission so that there can be a review of the, both the titles VIII and IX, and make recommendations if they feel that there's needs to be able to amend some of the statutes that govern these provisions, these statutes in Title IX. The makeup of the commission obviously will be individuals that are appointed by the three members appointed by the governor, two members appointed by the Chief Justice of the Judiciary of Guam, two members appointed by the Speaker of Ilas Latoran Guam, two members appointed by the Attorney General of Guam. But where they also were the assurances is that the appointments and the membership of the commission include representatives of all areas of the criminal justice system, including prosecutors, defense attorneys, judges, legal scholars, and relevant business interests. Again, it's asking for the assistance of the help of the legal profession and those in the judicial system to take a look at the laws as we have it and make those recommendations, you know, to the legislative body so that laws or legislation can be created and the laws can be enacted to be able to amend those areas of the law. So, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for having this for this hearing on this bill, and I look forward to listening to hearing the comments and the suggestions and recommendations from those who are here.
Thank you very much, Senator Blass. I'd again like to recognize my colleagues, so Senator Blass, Senator Taitiwi, Senator Moylan, Senator Joanne Brown, who's joined us, and Senator Amanda Shelton. Thank you, colleagues, and Senator Sabina Perez, who has also joined us. Thank you again for being with us, colleagues. Okay, so we had begun with Bill 146-36. That was the introduction by the sponsor. For the record, the committee requested feedback on Bill 146 and sent invitations to the Office of the Attorney General, the Public Defender Service Corporation, the Guam Bar Association, the Compiler of Laws, and the Judiciary of Guam, in addition to the public notice that was posted. So now we will begin with those who've signed up to testify on this bill. We'll begin with the Public Defender's Office, Stephen Atori, Director.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Welcome, senators. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this, what I believe is important legislations. Just for some perspective, the last time that we actually had a law revision was 1974. It generated really what we know today are called the Guam Code Annotated, and it consolidated Title VIII and Title IX and such. And so it's about 50 years since the last time we did it. Now Guam criminal law is pretty amazing, actually. For example, we had a bail statute that was passed in 1967, and it was considered at the time a really progressive bail statute that today's states are now adopting. For example, most states are moving away from requiring cash bail in every case, and Guam has not required a cash bail since, you know, the mid-'60s. And so, over the course of the years, basically since the '60s, Guam law has, you know, you know, been modified, hodgepodge, and I think it is time to really look at all the statutes and try to consolidate them and make them consistent. We also now have a very active Guam Supreme Court that has resulted in changes to the statutory law, and these things would need to be addressed by the commission. I know that the commission is not as ambitious as the one in 1974. In 1974, that Guam law revision was also tasked with looking at the laws and comparing it with uniform standard laws recommended by the American Bar Association and other jurisdictions. And so it did come up with other policy-based legislation that was patterned after similar laws in other states across the nation. And so, we think that it's time to consolidate that and also to try to, you know, correct those laws that the Guam Supreme Court has already corrected and make changes. Because when Guam adopted our criminal law from whatever jurisdiction, whether it was Michigan, California, whatever, those Supreme Courts have interpreted their statutes differently than the way that Guam has interpreted, or we have not followed their interpretations. And so a lot of laws we probably do need to address. And that's why I would recommend that rather than this being like a one-year commission, that it be a continuous commission that was three- to four-year appointed terms by each of the appointing bodies. The other change I would suggest is that, I know she's not going to be happy about this, but the compiler of laws, be added either as an ex officio member or as a member of, because I'm pretty sure she's, she goes through the Guam Code Annotated, and she looks at the Supreme Court rulings, and she goes, she can identify many of the inconsistencies that have existed. And I think the commission will also be great, because, you know, Guam has passed some great laws that we've never implemented, that other states across our country are now implementing, like the Youthful Offender Act was passed on Guam in the '60s. And it was a very forward-thinking statute that basically requires youthful offenders between the ages of 17 and 25 to be treated differently from more, you know, typical adults, and it was based on brain development and such. And we passed this in the '60s. States are now just passing that in their state. So we were far ahead of the curve in those kind of laws, but we just, you know, haven't implemented it. So I'm hoping that, you know, this commission could also point out the deficiencies that we have with our existing laws in terms of implementation. But I think, you know, it will be a great, it will be a great project. And it was kind of interesting that the, it was introduced by Senator Blass, and it was Joe Adam Frank Blass that actually passed the law that created the Guam Code Annotated after the Guam Law Revision was created and made recommendations back in 75. Anyways, but yeah, that's all I really have to, those are the amendments that I would suggest, that, you know, really probably also be extended to the civil realm, but, you know, that's really outside of my knowledge. But as far as the criminal law one, I think there's many things that we could help, you know, make it consistent. And so like, you know, we've had to work around certain laws, like for example, there's a law that was passed back when methamphetamine was, you know, first played Guam, and it basically said that you cannot receive a deferred plea for a methamphetamine case. And, you know, people who practice, especially with adult drug court prosecutors and the defense, we fashioned a loophole to that by charging it out as an amphetamine-based substance, right? So it is eligible for deferral, right? And so there's that law, but then there are other laws that allow deferred pleas for first offenders with drug cases. And so there's, you know, all these inconsistencies can be addressed. I mean, there's, we really have a long list of them, but we'll take too long to get into them here. But as far as myself, I totally support the commission of, you know, the creation of a commission, but one that is longer than one year, I think maybe three years, and it really should be continuous. Most jurisdictions that have law review commissions, it's pretty much continuous, three- or four-year terms, and because, you know, the law's constantly evolving, right? Especially now that we have a very active Supreme Court. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Director Atori. Mr. Morrison, Deputy Director of Public Defender, would you like to add to that?
Thank you, Madam Speaker and senators. Just briefly, I'm sure you can imagine, I'm not going to say anything contrary to what my director just said, but truthfully, I believe everything you just said is true. Many of the laws we have, particularly in criminal procedure, have been on the books for decades now, some going back to the '70s and '80s. And they don't necessarily mean today what they meant at the time they were passed. There's been changes with case law interpreting the language of them. So we might end up with statutes that don't really mean anything at this point, that are still on the books, that are really no benefit to anyone, which can kind of cause a lot of confusion. So I'm absolutely in favor of a commission that's going to study this and make recommendations. My only real comment is similar to Director Atori's, that I think this needs to be a longer or continuous commission. I've served on some of these commissions before, and I think when the members are selected, they're going to be pretty busy attorneys. They're going to be people that are really practicing this stuff, and that can cause some trouble with their personal schedules, with their work commitments, and those sorts of things. So I think imagining doing all of this as big a project as I envisioned in a year just wouldn't be possible. I think with a year, you might be looking to maybe 12 meetings or 24, if the commission was really ambitious. And I think in that period of time, it would be hard to undertake an entire review of Title VIII and IX, particularly if we were really going to study what other jurisdictions have done, what other jurisdictions' problems have been with the language they passed, how their laws have been interpreted. I think it's a huge project and would need a lot of time than just one year. I think yearly reports or recommendations would be appropriate, but restricting it to that time period, I think, would be a mistake. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director Morrison. We'll now hear from Attorney Andrew Serge Kanga, Deputy Administrator of the Courts.
Sorry about that. Half a day, Madam Speaker Turlai, members of the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, Senator Frank F. Blass Jr., and Senators of Ilas Latoran Guahan. My name is Andrew Serge Kanga. I am the Deputy Administrator of the Courts, and I provide this oral testimony on behalf of the Administrator of the Courts, Christina Baird, and the Judiciary of Guam. This testimony will summarize the written testimony, which will be submitted on behalf of the judiciary by the Administrator of the Courts, Christina Baird. I will summarize the issues raised by that written testimony here. For background purposes, I've been a practicing lawyer in Guam since 1996. Through the course of my career, I've been an Assistant Attorney General in the Litigation and Solicitors Division of the AG's Office. I also worked in the private legal sector for seven years. I've been a research attorney and staff attorney for the judiciary, and I was a compiler of laws from 2004 to 2011. I hope to be able to respond to any questions following this testimony. Madam Speaker, thank you for your invitation to provide testimony on behalf of the judiciary on Bill 146-36, which creates the Criminal Law and Procedure Review Commission that is tasked with reviewing Title VIII, which is entitled Criminal Procedures, and Title IX, which is entitled Crimes and Corrections, with the Guam Code Annotated, and making recommendations regarding the repeal or revision of provisions that may be unnecessary, unclear, duplicative, overly broad, or insufficient. The judiciary is grateful to Senator Frank Blass Jr. for introducing Bill 146. As no doubt, there are adequate provisions in the criminal code that are worth reviewing, and we understand the need to revise or repeal provisions of criminal law that may be outdated or inadequate. However, the judiciary must defer to the legislative and judicial, I'm sorry, the legislative and executive branches to create and enact meaningful criminal justice reform as it relates to substantive provisions of criminal offenses in Title IX. The fair administration of justice requires that the judiciary remain impartial and independent as it fulfills its role in interpreting the laws in cases before the courts. Thus, this testimony is limited to provisions within Bill 146 that affect the administration and operations of the judicial branch regarding the principle of the separation of powers and the authority of the judicial branch under the Organic Act of Guam. In this context, the judiciary would like to raise a few issues for your consideration as follows. First, conflict issues may arise from judiciary employees serving on the commission. Under Bill 146, the Chief Justice is authorized to appoint two members to the commission, one of whom the bill contemplates will be a judge. The appointment of a judicial employee or judicial officer may create a conflict under either the judiciary's revised code of conduct or the model code of judicial conduct. Under these roles, and out of respect for impartiality and the independency of the judiciary, employees and judicial officers are generally prohibited from commenting on matters that may come before the courts to include the legality of any proposed or existing legislation. If the composition of the commission and appointment authorities are unchanged, we respectfully request that additional language be included to state that members appointed to the commission by the Chief Justice, who are employees or judicial officers, may participate in the activities of the commission if such participation is not incompatible with their respective offices. The second issue is that the Organic Act at 48 U.S.C., Section 1424-1A6, provides the Supreme Court with authority over the practice and procedure in courts, in the courts of Guam. Under the 2004 amendments to the Organic Act, the Supreme Court of Guam has the authority to make and promulgate rules governing the administration of the judiciary and the practice and procedure in the courts of the judicial branch of Guam. This includes rules of criminal procedure, many of which are included in Title VIII, and predate the creation of the Supreme Court and its rulemaking authority. The proposed legislation should be amended to recognize that the duties mandated of the proposed commission are not meant to derogate, limit, or circumvent the existing powers of the Supreme Court to enact rules that touch on purely criminal procedure issues. Moreover, Title VIII was enacted by Public Law 13-186 in 1976, well before the Organic Act was amended in 2004 to create and enable the Supreme Court of Guam. The judiciary welcomes the opportunity to revise Title VIII accordingly. A third issue is that there is no specific administrative or financial support identified in Bill 146. Under Bill 146, the administrative function and support for the commission is to be equally shared by the appointing authorities of the commission. The section is unclear and provides no specific financial resources or support structure for the members of the commission to properly carry out its mandate. The complex and meticulous nature of the work of law revision commissions requires funding, administrative support, and potential staff. Without adequate funding and administrative support, the members of the commission would likely be unable to effectively and efficiently carry out its mandates within the prescribed one-year time period. By comparison, the State of California formed a committee on revision of the penal code, supported by an independent state agency, the California Law Revision Commission. Review of the penal code there took two years and cost over $1 million. A link to this information is included in the judiciary's written testimony on this bill. I also note that a previous effort by the legislature in 2014 in Bill 414-32 to reestablish the Guam Law Revision Commission, which had a broader mandate but functions similar to the proposed commission, had administrative clerical and financial support identified in that legislation. This law revision commission was to be reestablished under the legislature. Although Bill 1, I'm sorry, Bill 414-32 did not become law, these points are raised to show that proper administrative and financial support is essential for the commission to carry out its duties. The last issue we raised is that there is no reference in Bill 146 to the Compiler of Laws or the Guam Code Advisory Commission. As mentioned previously, the proposed commission's duties would overlap with existing mandates of entities within the judiciary's authority, specifically the Compiler of Laws and the Guam Code Advisor Commission, which entities are expressly created in one Guam Code Annotated, Chapter 16. Bill 146 does not recognize or acknowledge either the Compiler of Laws or the Guam Code Advisor Commission despite their intersecting or overlapping duties. For example, the Compiler of Laws is statutorily charged with publishing and making revisions to the GCA. Similarly, the Guam Code Advisor Commission, which is administratively supported by the Office of the Compiler and chaired by the Chief Justice, has a duty to conduct a review of the structure, format, and organization of Guam's laws. Because of the overlap between these statutory duties, we respectfully request that Bill 146 be amended to clarify the roles and the relationship the proposed commission would have with the Compiler of Laws and the Guam Code Advisor Commission, if any. This is to ensure that there is no substantive overlap in the work between these bodies as it pertains to any revisions in the Guam Code Annotated. In closing, an undertaking as serious and comprehensive as reviewing all provisions in Title VIII and Title IX should be done with the utmost diligence and attentiveness, particularly since it concerns the rights of the accused and the proper administration of justice. In the judiciary's and compiler of laws' written testimony on Bill 146, more information is included on how similarly situated commissions were formulated in other jurisdictions to address reforms of their respective criminal codes. This information should be helpful in the legislature's consideration of Bill 146 and any proposed changes or amendments. Again, we thank Senator Blass for introducing this bill. We support in principle the review of substantive criminal laws in Title IX, but we must defer to the other branches in that regard. The judiciary would be happy to work with Senator Blass and the committee on the provisions in Bill 146 related to Title VIII and criminal procedure within the courts of Guam. We are grateful for the opportunity to present this testimony. Madam Speaker, thank you.
Thank you much, Attorney Kanga. Attorney O'Malley, can you confirm, are you here to testify on this Bill 146? I can't hear you. If you could unmute. Still can't hear you.
There. Sorry, Madam Speaker. Yes, I am.
Okay, so are you testifying on behalf of the Attorney General's Office?
Yes, Your Honor.
All right.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, okay, please proceed.
Thank you. Half a day, Madam Speaker and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to present testimony on Bill 146-36. Today's testimony will be brief as we continue our review of the several bills for the public hearing today. However, we wanted to ensure that we are on the record as supporting the intent of Bill 146-36, which is to update Guam's criminal codes and procedures. Most of our criminal procedure statutes were derived from California and the model penal code as they existed decades ago. Those statutes have been revised numerous times, often in response to evolving criminal justice standards or to address gaps and inequities identified in case law. A comprehensive review of Guam's criminal laws could bring us up to date. Although we support the creation of the Guam Criminal Law and Procedure Review Commission, we do not believe, and where I join Mr. Atori, Mr. Morrison, and Mr. Kanga, that we do not believe that a one-year timeframe will be adequate to properly evaluate the entirety of Title VIII and Title IX. We would suggest either breaking up the review into the two parts, providing periodic updates and recommendations, and extending the amount of time to provide the legislature and governor with findings and recommendations. I would also agree with Mr. Kanga's comment. I do not believe the judiciary should be part of the committee for Title IX revisions. However, I do support they be there for the Title VIII Criminal Procedures Provision, with the exception of, I believe, the compiler should be in all of these commissions, although the compiler was overworked, but is an integral part of the laws of Guam, as she keeps us all updated on that. Back to you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Attorney O'Malley. Could you please state your name, your full name, and position for the record?
James Maslow O'Malley III. I'm the chief prosecutor for the Office of the Attorney General of Guam.
Sutus Masi. We will now hear from our compiler.
Thank you. Half a day, Speaker Turlai, members of the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, Senator Frank Blass F. Jr., and Senators of Ilas Latoran Guahan. I'm Geraldine Empar Cepeda, the compiler of laws. Thank you for giving me the opportunity today to provide testimony on Bill 146-36 LS. This oral testimony is a summary of my written testimony, which will be submitted after this public hearing. It has been my privilege to serve as the compiler of laws, a position I've held for 10 years. After being appointed by Chief Justice Ethel Carbelito in 2011, I follow in the footsteps of now Deputy Administrator of the Court Serge Kanga and the first compiler of laws, the innumerable Charles Troutman. My past government service also includes serving as Attorney General in the Child Support and Prosecution Divisions as the Staff Attorney and Research Attorney for the Supreme Court, as well as federal service in the District Court of Guam. I first like to give my support for the stated legislative intent of Bill 146-36, which is to facilitate a review of Guam statutes on criminal offenses and criminal procedure by stakeholders and experts. As the compiler and in my past government service, really, I've been up close and personal with Guam law for nearly 20 years. My testimony today will cover three main areas. First, reviewing the history and the current state of Guam's criminal law. Second, giving examples of other code revision projects, such as the one contemplated by this bill. And third, identifying characteristics of successful code revision projects. As has been testified, it's been nearly, really, 50 years since the last comprehensive review of Guam's criminal codes. The Guam Law Revision Commission was created in 1974, and it conducted its work during the 12th and 13th Guam legislatures during the mid-'70s. They reviewed laws that have been enacted in the 1930s. That was during the naval administration. So they were doing a lot of work, and they actually resulted in three enactments in 1976, which was the Criminal Correctional Code enacted by Public Law 13-185, the Criminal Procedure Code that was enacted by Public Law 13-186, and the last enactment, 13-187, were amendments to all the other laws in the codes in light of the creation of the new criminal and criminal procedure codes. Or really, most people are familiar with the criminal code's current placement in the GCA or the Guam Code Annotated. And this is a new codification, as you know, that was authorized in 1980 by Public Law 15-104. Now, the Criminal Procedure Code is found in Title VIII, and Criminal Offenses or the Criminal and Correctional Code, it's found in Title IX. I'd like to briefly go over- I'd like to briefly go over the current state of each code. And as you heard, with regard to Title eight, the Law Revision Commission in the seventies had decided to place. The rules of criminal procedure. In statute, and this is according to a compiler, Charles Troutman. But again, when the when the Organic Act was amended in two thousand four, the Supreme Court of Guam was created. I'm sorry, was established as a separate and co-equal branch. And it was also given the authority, a supervisory and administrative authority over the branch. They have the authority to promulgate rules governing practice and procedure in the courts of Guam, which necessarily includes authority over state, over court rules. And this authority is not unusual. The U.S. Supreme Court, in fact, adopts the federal rules of criminal procedure. And in a majority of states, the Supreme Court promulgates or adopts rules of criminal procedure. Therefore, this committee may consider whether review of Title eight would be more appropriate under the auspices of the Supreme Court of Guam. With regard to Title nine, the Criminal and Correctional Code. It is replete with piecemeal amendments, repeals, and enactments. And a comprehensive evaluation of all of these laws as contemplated by Bill one forty six dash thirty six. Would benefit not only the judicial branch or the attorneys or the law enforcement officers, but really the entire community of Guam. The last comprehensive review was nearly fifty years ago, and I think we can all agree that it's a different world now. There are laws in Title nine that need to be added, updated, or removed. The new commission proposed by this legislation faces a daunting task, which is reviewing all the criminal laws. And to suggest legislation regarding the repeal or revision of laws. That are identified as being unnecessary, unclear, duplicative, overly broad. Or otherwise insufficient to serve the purpose of the law. This is daunting, but not impossible. In fact, the next part of my testimony will cover. Uh, two other jurisdictions that have undergone similar criminal code revision projects and completed their work in twenty twenty one. I'd like to summarize their experiences and point out some commonalities between these two projects. In California, the Committee on the Revision of the Penal Code completed a two-year review of its criminal law. And despite two years, did not submit proposed draft legislation. As part of its annual and final report. In Washington, D.C., the D.C. Advisory Group of the Criminal Code Reform Commission. Held meetings nearly every month from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty one. And they ultimately did submit a revised Criminal Code Act of twenty twenty one to the D.C. Council and the D.C. Mayor. The two commonalities I'd like to point out first is that both entities received significant financial support. In California, the Penal Code Review Committee received more than one million dollars from the state budget over two fiscal years. For the D.C. Commission, its budget request was nearly seven hundred thousand dollars, and this was just for staff for fiscal year twenty twenty one. I'm not sure exactly what the D.C. Commission had requested in the other years since they did start in twenty sixteen. The second commonality is that both entities had administrative and legal expertise to support their work. The California Committee was administratively placed within the existing California Revision Commission. And this is an independent state agency with both legal and administrative staff. The committee itself also had a legal director and a staff attorney. For the D.C. Commission, when I reviewed the twenty twenty one budget requests, there was a staff of five personnel. And that included an executive director, three senior attorneys, and a social scientist. In fact, I'd like to point out that our own Law Revision Commission that was created in nineteen seventy four share these characteristics. Public Law twelve ninety three mandated hiring a licensed attorney to serve as the Executive Secretary. I understand this position performed essentially the functions of a recorder for the Law Revision Commission's work. This public law also authorized five hundred thousand dollars in the general fund appropriations. And actually, I converted it to account for inflation. This amount would be equivalent to more than two million dollars today. So really, the bill, the intent of Bill one forty six dash thirty six is commendable. A comprehensive and a complete review and evaluation of Guam's criminal laws would benefit the people of Guam. But these other code revision projects show the characteristics that they had in common. So to review, to ensure a thorough and meaningful review of Guam's criminal laws, I suggest. That the committee consider whether the proposed legislation first. Involves members with with subject matter expertise. Second, that the legislation appropriates adequate and dedicated funding. Third, that there is enough administrative support provided, and fourth, that there is a realistic timeframe for the commission to do its work. As had been testified previously. I would also specifically respectfully request that the draft legislation clarify. The relationship amongst the different entities already existing in Guam that are responsible for reviewing Guam law. In nineteen eighty, the compilers' office was superseded, the compilers' office superseded, excuse me. The Guam Law Revision Commission pursuant to Public Law fifteen one oh four. And in two thousand four, Public Law twenty seven dash seventy seven created the Guam Code Advisory Commission. Which, as you've heard, is responsible for reviewing the structure, format, and organization of the Guam. Code annotated for Guam law and for making recommendations for public access, editorial. And production issues. By statute, my office, the compilers' office, provides administrative support for the Guam Code Advisory Commission. And although Bill one forty six dash thirty six proposes. A new commission to review Guam law, it does not refer either to the compilers' office or to the Guam Code Advisory Commission. This omission in language was also found in a bill introduced during the thirty second Guam Legislature, Bill four fourteen thirty two. It also did not mention the two existing entities. And at the time, it was referred to committee but was not reported out. I I'm not sure why. But the bottom line is I do support this, the intent of this public, of this proposed legislation. Which is a review of Guam's criminal laws. And to the extent that I am permitted by the judiciary's personnel rules, rules, and by ethical considerations. I welcome the opportunity to collaborate with the commission. However, the bill should clarify the role of the office as well as the role of the Guam Code Advisory Commission. I thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to provide testimony on this bill, and I'd be happy to address any questions on this testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peta, Attorney Sepeda and compiler, and I want to thank you for your very thorough testimonies, very helpful, especially the history. I appreciate that. Um, I think the twelfth legislature, that's when my dad was on the legislature back then, but, uh, okay, so. We're going to begin with questions from the senators and. And then we will allow the sponsor to close on the bill. So I'm going to begin with, I just have two questions. One is. For the prosecutor, Chief Prosecutor O'Malley, Attorney General's Office. Is the prosecution of. Criminal cases currently being impeded by the need to revise criminal statutes?
I would say yes, uh, because some of the statutes are. I don't know, I would say antiquated, but, uh. Are not being, uh, as we, the biggest problem is a piecemeal changes. And so one section might make a change that impacts another one. And we've got to be very careful as we put it all together that we're following everyone's rules, regulations, and most importantly, the defendant's rights.
All right. Yeah, so are there any statutes in particular that you think are in urgent need of revision?
The the one that impacts and is most compelling for our victims, of course, is, uh. Would be chapter twenty five, the criminal sexual conduct sections. Uh, then, of course, chapter thirty one, which deals with family violence. Uh, those are the the two that seem to have the biggest impact and are, of course, our biggest caseload. Uh, and we would definitely need to make sure that those are all current and up to date. Uh, I know later on this afternoon, we're going to talk to Senator Moilinsville. Uh, pertaining to government, basically government corruption cases, bribery of that nature. And there needs to be changes in those sections also. But I'm addressing that later on.
Okay, so there have been several bills that have gone through the legislature since I've been in the legislature for a couple of terms now. Regarding criminal sexual conduct, including family violence, but yeah, I haven't seen any other recommendations from the Attorney General's Office as to. Necessary changes to those, but I would welcome that. If if you've had those prepared, please. Please send those while this commission's work might take a couple of years, as testified. There's nothing to prevent us from making those changes if the Attorney General's Office is is seeing the need for that. I would welcome.
All right. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. And my other question for the judiciary, so the current Guam Code Advisory Committee. Um, well, you testified earlier that you believe this, uh, this bill, um. Creating this commission with me, well, that that you. Having the judiciary service members or, uh. Of this commission might be a violation of the separation of powers. And I just want to ask the same about the Guam Code Advisory Commission. Do you do you believe that that has the same issues? That it might be, uh, that there are separation of powers issues for having the judiciary serve on the Guam Code Advisory Committee? Attorney Kanga.
Uh, thank you for that question, Madam Speaker. I don't. But to the extent I think that the Guam Code Advisory Commission could could assist. Uh, the proposed commission. On the formatting of the Guam Code and how things are arranged within, I think that would be perfectly fine. In two thousand four, when we published the the green G C As. It was the the Guam Code Advisory Commission that worked very closely with our with the compilers' office. And in approving the format, so that's the sort of thing that I think that the Guam Code Advisory Commission is able to do, and it's. The structure is already in place. It hasn't, I think, had the opportunity to do a lot of work since that time. But obviously, if we're looking at. A complete revision or a thorough revision. Of both Title eight and Title nine, then there are things and expertise that both the. The Guam Code Advisor Commission and the Compiler of Laws Office can provide.
All right, and is there, um. Any planned updates to the criminal procedure from the court? Uh, so the Criminal Procedure Code, of course, is in Title eight. And this bill proposes that, uh, you know, it would be reviewed by this commission. However, yeah, you've testified that that. Should be under the purview of the court, so I'm asking, is there any pending, um, updates to criminal procedure through the courts?
Thank you again, Madam Speaker. At the moment, there is none, but I think that's why we really do welcome. The proposed legislation because it does put the criminal procedures. Uh, on the front burner, and it's something I think that that the court has been looking forward to to taking for for some time now.
All right, thank you very much. Senator Blas, would you like to ask questions now or later? Otherwise, you're welcome now. Senator Blas can't hear you.
Can you, I'm sorry, ma'am, can you repeat that? I'm getting a.
Oh, I'm asking if you would like to ask questions now. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam. What I'll do is I'll defer until my other colleagues ask the questions, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Senator Titekwe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. I don't think I've seen this many attorneys in one area at one time in a long time. But I'm glad to see that you're all participating in such legislation like this and providing your comments. However, what I'm not seeing is the, um, if there's been any, um. You know, uh, what is it, reach out to the Guam Bar Association as well to conduct any review or potential conflicts or. Or outdated statutes when the title of eight and nine, so I'm hoping to incorporate their comments and testimonies. Um, I really don't have any real questions right now. I look forward to your testimony, especially from the compiler of law. Um, you were reading a document. I was wondering if you can post it on the on this chat, this Zoom chat. Uh, so we have an opportunity to to see what you read, as well as all those who testified. It's, um, nice to have your testimony ahead of time so that we can prepare even, you know, some questions for it. But in the meantime, I thank you for the opportunity, uh, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to speak and make comments and. Or everyone who participated today. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Titekwe. Yes, and if everyone could please submit their testimony, that would be very helpful to us. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you to the author of the bill. Appreciate the comments and recommendations. Uh, continues to review the bill. I'm glad for the input and looks favorable that we can improve. Uh, with different comments. I look forward to this. Moving through the floor. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Brown, you are recognized. Sorry, can't hear you yet, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly appreciate the testimony and certainly the efforts of the author, Senator Blas, to. Introduce this. I mean, there's obviously a need to do it and and certainly realizing how far back it's been since we've had anything. Like this that can perform the review of existing statutes. I mean, it's been quite a long time. Uh, and I'm sure we'll agree because the legislature certainly has adopted a notwithstanding provision on almost every bill we introduce. Uh, wiping away any previous legislation that might be connected to the subject matter. It obviously would be very helpful to see what we could do to clean up. Our 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 books with regards to these laws, so that it's easy reference for certainly those that are engaged in the very practice of all the attorneys and the legal system that's here. But also for the community and anyone who wants to look up our existing laws to know what does or does not apply or what they'd like to see or what they'd like to recommend, so. I don't think there's any doubt about the value of what this commission will bring. Uh, but I also concur with some of the testimony. I think the commission here extending the timeline, I think, is quite a reasonable request to undertake. Uh, what is a considerable amount of work that's going to be involved. And perhaps even looking as there additional resources that can be provided to support the commission, because obviously there's going to be, uh. Resources that are going to be needed even just to compile the information and put it together and type it. Uh, you know, there's going to have to be some support staff that's going to be provided, because more than likely, if you do have other attorneys that are appointed or contributing to this. Most of them are not going to be able to take the time to sit down and do that, so. Certainly, the author will consider. I think it's a very important mission that this commission will undertake. So I don't know that we have several million dollars as in the other jurisdiction, but we certainly should put some support resources. To the commission so that they, it doesn't impede their ability to to meet. Uh, and then make determinations and recommendations and have some support resources there to. Record that and then certainly forward it to the legislature. Uh, for our review and consideration. So I certainly look forward to it. I think it's it's a very good bill. I think we have a lot to gain from it. And more importantly, I think cleaning up the statute, because as legislators, obviously, some things are done for political expediency. Sometimes it's done for headlines. Uh, and not necessarily, you know, to make sure that we actually have some sound legislation in place. Um, that that is readily available for access and for. Reference, especially of our community, those that are not attorneys that, uh, may want to look at our laws, so anything we can do to help address that and clean up the process, I certainly support it, so. Other than that, Madam Speaker, I have no questions. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Legislative Secretary Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the panel today for the discussion, your comments and your suggestions on the bill. I dropped off for a little bit earlier, so I'm not sure if this question was already asked. But I did hear the concern from a couple of you about the timeline for the bill and reporting back the commission's findings. Uh, if anyone here can discuss further what they think an appropriate timeline would be. Maybe Ms. Sepeda, I know you you did bring it up.
Thank you. Um, yes, thank you. I I would just point to the two examples that I gave. California's was a two-year revision of its penal code. But for that particular committee, they weren't tasked with producing draft legislation. So with two years and a million dollars, they didn't come up with draft legislation. Um, I don't know if they went that extra step, whether it would have cost more and how much longer it would have taken. In D.C., they were, that, um, Code Reform Commission was constituted in twenty sixteen. And initially, it was a two-year project. As you can see, they didn't complete until twenty twenty one. So, uh, it's, I I would say at the very least, one to two years perhaps wouldn't even be enough. Uh, for a thorough review as is contemplated by Bill one forty six thirty six. And, um, as I think Attorney Morrison pointed out, in some jurisdictions, it's an ongoing review. So that that's another consideration the committee may wish to think about.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate the answer. And, uh, I will, I look forward to continuing to review the testimonies that are provided today to ensure that we, uh. Uh, update and strengthen this this bill the best that we can and provide the resources that are necessary to. to ensure that we update and strengthen this this bill the best that we can and provide the resources that are necessary to you folks to complete this task. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate the dialogue thus far. I'm also in support of consistency. And I do realize a lot of the bills that come out of legislature tend to be piecemeal. And definitely, we need to address that. And hopefully, maybe we can provide resources that can prevent any kind of inconsistencies to begin with. So I guess one of the questions that I have is, would it be best suited to, you know, review the laws under the Guam Code Advisory Commission? I guess this question could be for Jodi and Sepeda. Is it a better framework to have the review under that office versus a complete different task force?
Oh, thank you. That's a great question, Senator Perez. What I'd like to do is just point the senators to the statute creating the Guam Code Advisory Commission, which is 1GC 1611. There's a very specific mandate in this statute that's more organizational, more addressing more towards public access rather than substantive review with regard to placement and organization. I think certainly the Guam Code Advisory Commission could work with a committee or a commission, task force, work group, an entity that is responsible for reviewing and making actual judgment calls as to the substance of what the statute is covering. But I don't I don't see an overlap, but that's what I'd like to clarify. And and my testimony was to seek clarification to ensure there is no overlap. There is no contradiction because the Guam Code Advisory Commission is responsible for organization, which may affect a substantive review. Similarly, a substantive review could affect how how the codes are organized, how the provisions are organized within the code chapters and the just the overall organization of the Guam law. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I guess another question that I have, I believe it was for Attorney O'Malley. I don't know if I heard this correctly, but there was a suggestion that maybe looking at Title eight first and then Title nine. Did I hear that correctly, that perhaps we should take one title first and then the next one?
And whichever you want to take first doesn't matter, but I think they need to be reviewed separately. My my thought process and that is, I I do not believe the judiciary should be part of the Title nine review because it does create obvious conflict subsequently when cases are taken up to the Supreme Court and they're now tasked to decide on the law that they had a participation in passing. So that so that was part of my reason for splitting the two titles up. And then whether it does Title eight or Title nine, I understand the the thought that perhaps that the judiciary should be doing Title eight because they do are more involved with the procedures. But so maybe perhaps we start with Title nine and go from there while the judiciary works on its committee with a review of Title eight. But they definitely should be done separately. Otherwise, we're going to get so bogged down and nothing's going to happen, definitely within one or two year timeframe.
You know, being that the case, or if that were the case, do you foresee an issue? For instance, will there be an overlap? Let's say there is a suggestion to change Title eight in a certain way. And then, I guess, Title nine, could that adversely impact? You know, create some, I guess, overlap or loophole, I should say, if one was separate of another?
Yeah, that's always a possibility. But at the same time, I believe that that's a small risk that we can take and it can be addressed on a case by case basis.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for those responses. I think those are my questions thus far. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Perez. Okay, if I could ask a few more questions before we we give it to the sponsor. Just so the membership of the composition of the commission, this the judiciary is and has pointed out that there may be conflict with the judiciary. Two members appointed by the Chief Justice of the judiciary. There are two members appointed by the AG, two members appointed by the Speaker, two members, three members appointed by the Governor. And then it says that the commission shall include representatives of all areas of the criminal justice system, including prosecutors, defense attorneys, judges, legal scholars, and relevant business interests. Do you think, well, I guess that's just going to be hard to coordinate if, you know, if I'm appointing and the governor's appointing, how are we going to coordinate to make sure there is a defense attorneys represented here? Do the public defender, let me ask you on behalf of defense attorneys, do you believe they should be on this commission?
Looking at other commissions across the country, that generally isn't a requirement. But a lot of these also have like professors of law in it and stuff. As far as us being on it specifically, you, I mean, I think we would be able to bring a lot to the table. However, I think some of the laws that, especially if they change some of the policy, we might still pose at the legislative level because the commission is just going to recommend bills, right? So so, I mean, we're going to be able to provide input at some point in the process. So whether you would prefer it happen at this stage before it gets sent to the legislature or after it's formally introduced, you know, we'll always be able to participate and you know, help the senators make a wise decision. But yeah, I don't see the general need to require a public defender. I mean, they also have like attorneys in the defense bar. My suggestion would be to maybe have the Guam Bar president appoint two if the judiciary isn't comfortable with it. But I still would recommend that the compiler be an executive member. And maybe even, I know I saw one commission where the chairperson of the judiciary committee was an executive member also.
Right, thank you.
Those are other options that the judiciary, you know, I understand the conflict issues that they would be concerned about, and I'm sure they wouldn't appoint, you know, a judge or a justice to the commission. But it's it's, you know, it's not foreign. I think that at the federal level, they have commissions for judges to participate. So but as far as our office, I mean, you know, us, we're always willing to help, right? Services are middle name. So if we're called upon, we'll help. It's, you know, it's not really required.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Hattori. And what about if anyone could comment on the bill provides that we should have representation from the relevant business interests? And now we're talking about revision of a criminal code. And I guess if I could just ask if anyone might have any thoughts on who the relevant business interests are?
Before, I will make comment on that, but before we go straight too far from Mr. Tori's comments, I do want to bring up, I was thinking, you know, the judicial appointments would be coming out of the public defender's office anyway because they work under the judiciary. But at the same time, it creates a unusual circumstance where it's going to almost tie their hands on appellate reasons following a trial because one of the things they always are successful and appealing is the interpretation of a law. And it looks bad if their name is on that law. So it's a sticky situation that the public defender would be in. Although they have some great minds there and they could, they do provide good input, but it would put them in a difficult position. My my comment I was going to make earlier during my general comments, but I'll bring it up since the speaker, Madam Speaker, you brought it up. I disagree with the general public participating in the lawmaking, other than, of course, the the Senate body. I I feel for a law review commission, it should be members who either they've gone and graduated from a law school or they're members of the Guam Bar. I just feel that we get a better product at that result. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just want to remind that I did seek the input from the Guam Bar Association and I asked them to inform all their members. I'm going to continue to do that before we report the bill out. And
I'm sorry.
Okay, Attorney Hattori, you wanted to add?
You know, the the Guam Law Revision from the seventies, it actually included a a member that was appointed from the judicial branch, appointed by the Judicial Council. And there was a one member from the Guam Bar Association appointed by the president of the Guam Bar. So, you know, there's statutory precedent for appointments from both of those entities. But I don't, I mean, I I see the conflict with the judges and they don't necessarily have to appoint a judge. They could appoint, you know, someone from the defense panel.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. And okay, and then for my final point, I I, you know, the more I'm thinking about it, Attorney O'Malley, the more I'm, yeah, I'm concerned that if there are, you know, we have these hearings on bills, especially criminal sexual conduct, I have to say, one of the more, you know, the the senators are very interested in that. So they write many bills regarding criminal sexual conduct, especially release conditions, sentencing penalties. And, you know, I think that we've tried to do the same with family violence. There are also some bills coming up. But but I too am concerned that if these codes are are, you know, not being reviewed as a whole, then you know, it may it may create some type of issues for you. And however, I would ask that, yeah, you retreat this urgently, that, you know, criminal sexual conduct, family violence, those are the ones we really want you to succeed in in your prosecution. And we want you to, you know, be expedient about it. And and I don't want to wait for a commission to have to come down on that, you know, after years of reviewing the entire code. And, you know, perhaps we can prioritize those sections of the code. Since you have mentioned that if we do do a commission, otherwise, I would ask the Attorney General's Office to please submit a recommendations. I would like to act on that as soon as possible if they are impeding prosecutions of criminal cases of criminal sexual conduct and family violence. That that's news to me. So it's very, very concerned. But I'm going to now hand it to the sponsor, Senator Blas. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to all who have testified. You know, it was every day you learn something new and you learn something, you know, make things better. And I appreciate that the discussion here was on how to make this better. I think we can all agree that, as as Attorney Hattori had stated, the last time that this is a comprehensive review of this has been, we're almost 50 years ago. And and obviously, the laws have changed. Laws have changed since the last time I was a police officer and I was helping to to to, you know, arrest criminals. And and, you know, why, why the review commission or why this this legislation, I think, for a couple of reasons? Again, I go back to the discussions I was having with with, you know, the members of the Attorney General's Office and and members, you know, of the legal community of the primarily, a lot of the concerns was was in the area of criminal sexual conduct cases, which is why, you know, along with this bill, if you can recall, there was a slew or other bills related to criminal sexual conduct that I introduced along with, you know, alongside these bills. I, you know, and I hate to to say this, but but I appreciate the, you know, the the conversation we had with regards to a a, you know, another review commission and and some of the steps and procedures that should have been taken over the last few years who people for institutions that had the authority to do this and hasn't been done. Something's got to get done, you know, because we 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 need to move on it. I appreciate. And and, you know, I I put out initially the the one year, just recognizing that I do recognize that that maybe that this may not be enough time. But, you know, let's let's start that as, let's use that as a departure point for to have the conversation. You know, I I'm of the opinion too that it is, you know, it could probably take, it should take, you know, a little bit longer than that and probably even establish a permanent commission. But that's for a discussion down the road. You know, I I look forward to working, continue to work with the committee on some of the very valuable recommendations that have been provided by by all of you who have presented, you know, your testimony in this in these bills. I too would wait to see the written version of of many of the oral testimony so that, you know, we have notes to to go back on, look into. And the name that we can, okay, you know, Basil said this, you know, Stephen said that, you know, John said this, let's go back and let's let's pick their brain so that we can, at the end of the day, come up with a bill that does satisfy and does help to to, in 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 this case, help to rectify and remedies a what what continues to be a longstanding issue with regards to the ever changing and evolving, you know, laws in the in in this area of of law, okay, in the criminal side. I appreciate the 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 suggestion of inclusion of other members. Ma'am, Madam Attorney Shapiro, it was not not my intent to purposely leave you out of of the, you know, the bill. I thank you for the opportunity for for you to say, please, make me make me a part of this. But I too, I too know just how overwhelming and, you know, loaded you are in as far as as the as you as your work is, but I appreciate it. I I see, you know, why and how your 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 participation in this thing can be very vital. Again, once again, I want to thank all of you for being able to provide the your testimony. And I'm sure as the speaker, we would probably tell you, you've got the, you know, 10 more days to be able to provide more information. And at the end of the day, what we want to do is is come up with a bill. I come up with legislation that can help all of you, you know, in in what you do in as far as the justice, you know, providing justice for 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 people. Going back to 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 Attorney Hattori and Attorney Morrison with regards to to the public defender and and also the Guam Bar. You know, I I didn't want to have legislation that would basically direct a institution or an agency or an entity that is basically outside the realm of, you know, government. And direct, I I think that now we can have that conversation and how we can be able to to include those members. But it's always been my intent in this legislation to have, you know, the the full gamut of of the representation in the judicial judicial system to include the other defensive attorneys. Because, you know, there are some, you guys got some really bright minds. And and I'm sure that at the end of the day, what we want to do is is a safer, more judicious, you know, system and Guam as a as a result of this. So with that, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you. And to my colleagues, thank you too as well for your attendance.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. There being no additional individuals to present further testimony, the committee will consider Bill 146-36 LS duly heard. It is 3:08 PM and we will now move on to our second agenda item. That is Bill number 238-36COR, introduced by James C. Moylan. Senator Moylan, you may introduce the bill. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, colleagues, for your attendance and those who wish to testify. Thank you very much. So this is an act to amend subsection 82, 202 of chapter 82, title 10, Guam Code annotated. It's relative to the responsibilities of peace officers and when bringing an individual to a qualified mental health professional for examination. So the peace officers are assigned the task to basically determine whether to restrain or detain a person because of their mental health at the time. And then bring them to the right department for assistance, such as the Department of Behavioral Health or even the emergency room at the hospital where mental health professionals can assist them. The current law says the officer must remain there until the individual has completed the exam. This, we understand, does take time, but there is importance for the officer to be there if the person is noncompliant and does need to be restrained or detained. Only if, of course, there's a danger to the self, the person's self or to others as well. So what the bill proposes to do is, well, first, it identifies based on the officers that not all individuals brought to the Department of Behavioral Health or the emergency room are in a danger to self or danger to others because of their mental illness at this at the time. And in some cases, these individuals are also compliant to the process and are glad to receive the help. So this bill then, it's allows the officer to determine this if no threat If no threat exists, uh, then they can leave the individual in the hands of the proper support volunteers. The bill gives the flexibility to the officer. Uh, so the officer can then, uh, if so, determines that this person is not a threat to himself or others, the officer can, uh, turn it over to the volunteers and the officer can get back uh, to the critical areas in servicing our island in public safety. So thank you, Madam Speaker, and I look forward to the testimonies. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Moylan. I'd like to recognize the presence of my colleagues in addition to Senator Moylan, Senator Taitikui, Senator Brown, Senator Shelton, and Senator Paris. We will now hear from those signed up to testify, beginning with Chief of Police, Stephen Ignatius.
Hi, could you hear me? This is Captain Castro from the Guam Police Department.
Okay, Captain Castro, yes. Are you going to testify on behalf of the chief? Chief, I see you there.
Oh, the chief there?
Yes. Chief, would you like to testify?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, please proceed.
How may I speak to you, Senator from the Guam Legislature? Uh, the Guam Police Department provides oral testimony this afternoon and will, uh, follow it with their testimony. The Guam Police Department, uh, stands in support of, uh, Bill number two three eight thirty six as introduced by Senator Jim Moylan. Uh, uh, the Guam Police Department within the last, uh, uh, during the last few months, from November to February of this year, uh, just to give, put some context into the bill, uh, we brought in an average, uh, I'm sorry, we brought in eleven people who needed help with the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. Uh, on average, the officers were were down, uh, having to stay with this individual under the current law for up to four hours and sometimes longer. And so what this does is that, uh, if the Guam Police Department in working with the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center personnel determine that there is no longer need and there's no longer a threat, uh, from the person that needs the services, that the officers can now, uh, leave and the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center personnel can continue with their assessment and treatment of, uh, the person, uh, that is brought in in preferably in a pinned situation or involuntary seventy-two hour hold. Uh, this creates a, what we would refer to as a warm handoff. And this also supports, uh, current efforts that the Guam Police Department and Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center personnel are engaged with in an M O U uh, to further rat- ratify what what we're doing. And, uh, it it's also going to follow uh, some of the efforts that are in place, uh, to create a response team that includes the Guam Police Department and Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center partners. So, uh, thank you for your time. And again, uh, the Guam Police Department is in support of Bill two three.
Thank you very much, Chief Ignatius. Captain Castro, would you like to testify? If you could unmute, sir. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me now? Okay, uh, I'm Captain Castro from the Guam Police Department. I'm assigned to the District Two Division, which is overseeing Aga Precinct and Central. And I do commend, uh, I call the sentiments of the chief in regards to supporting this bill.
Sir, 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 could you please just speak louder or closer? Yeah, thank you very much.
Can you hear me now? Okay, uh, I'm Captain Castro. I oversee Aga Precinct and Central Precinct. I do echo echo the sentiment of the chief and support this bill as well. I'm hoping this comes through first and sooner than later. Uh, any assistance we can get from any agency or group will definitely help patrol officers be readily available out on the street rather than than rather than being tied down, um, at G M H or Mental Health. So I do this and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Captain Castro. All right, we also have Attorney Daniel Summerfleck, Executive Director of the Guam Legal Services. Attorney Summerfleck?
Thank you very much, Speaker, and thank you, Senators. Because I am a federal grantee, I cannot speak in support or opposition of any bill before the legislature. Otherwise, everyone will say I'm lobbying. Um, I have reviewed this bill and I believe that there are some changes that may assist in the process here. Um, it's my understanding that G P D officers have the ability to detain when they believe a person is a danger to themselves, others are gravely disabled. And I think anything in a bill that suggests that the person is not a danger to themselves, a danger to others or gravely disabled eliminates that officer's ability to restrain and detain. So I would just make a suggestion looking at this bill. On line thirteen, I would change, I would take out a danger to self, a danger to others or gravely disabled because of mental illness. I would take out.
Senator Flick, which page?
First page.
Okay, line thirteen.
Line thirteen.
All right.
And then on line fourteen, in some cases, these individuals are also compliant and have it read, um, however, not all individuals brought to the Guam G B H W C or emergency room of the hospital for examination by qualified mental health professionals are noncompliant toward the process. Thus, it is only appropriate that the, that if the officer, I would take out the word probable cause determines that no active threat exists. I believe that doesn't modify the bill substantially, but it eliminates a question mark of a G P D officer picking up someone because they're a danger to themselves and others are gravely disabled, taking them to the emergency room and then making a determination that they're not a danger to themselves, others are gravely disabled, which I believe would eliminate their ability then to detain or restrain. So I make that suggestion. I would also say at the bottom of that same, on the second page, line eight, who may not be certified in the matter. It's versus a police officer. And the reason, I think, just to educate the legislators about this, the reason that this is necessary is because no underlying medical condition. And this is generally where G P D officers are cooling their heels for three to more, four to more hours waiting to go through that medical clearance. So I I believe that if they're not an active threat as compared to not being danger to themselves, others are gravely disabled, that would still allow the police officer to move forward. And then in the body on page three, I would again on line nine remove out has probable cause that an individual is is not a danger to self, not a danger to others, or not gravely disabled because of mental illness. And I would take all that out. So it would read more along the lines of notwithstanding other, any other provision of law, rule or regulation to the contrary, if a peace officer believes an individual is compliant, he may then contact the peer support volunteer. In other words, we don't want, in my mind's eye, at one point, the officer saying, I'm picking you up because you're gravely disabled, you're a danger to yourself, you're a danger to others. And then perhaps twenty, thirty minutes later, while they're waiting at the hospital, say, oh, no, you're not gravely disabled, a danger to yourself, a danger to others, but you got to stay here. So I would just make those suggestions to the legislature looking at the bill. Again, I I can't speak in support or opposition to the bill, but I believe this is a first step in a process of changing how we address mental health people in crisis. And I believe that this should be an ongoing process. I know Speaker Trelawney and I have had conversations and I've distributed out materials about different ways to approach individuals in mental health crisis. I may differ with some other people in the community, and it's my belief that a person, if a person is nonthreatening and hasn't committed a criminal act, I believe our first responder should responders should be peer advocates or qualified, I forget the exact term we used in here, mental health professionals. Because, and I I don't mean to be negative at all to the chief or to the captain or anyone from law enforcement, but there is a reality that I've experienced in my practice and working with people with mental illness, and the uniform is a trigger. You know, someone who's having a, um, mental health crisis, the last thing that may be appropriate to deescalate is an officer in uniform. And I just put that forward. Again, I mean no dispersion toward our G P D officers. I know they work very hard. I know they're very understanding toward a number of individuals. But just the uniform itself can be a trigger. I would thank the legislature and Senator Moylan for bringing forward this legislation. I do believe it's a step in a process that we as a community need to start making. But unfortunately, I'm bound to not say whether I support it or oppose it. Thank you very much. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Attorney Summerfleck, for your time and and the work of Guam Legal Services Corporation. All right, for the record, requests for feedback on Bill two three eight were sent to Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, Guam Police Department, Guam Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission, the Post Commission, the Guam Bar Association and the Judiciary of Guam, in addition to the public notices that were provided. So we did receive a fiscal impact note on this bill. So B B M R states in the fiscal note that the bill would, quote, relieve the peace officer under certain circumstances of having to remain with the individual for the duration of the person's examination once he certified, quote, peer support volunteer, unquote, is present. While doing so has the potential to reduce peace officer personnel costs, including overtime and night differential payments, the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center is concerned with the legislation as written as the, quote, liability is very high for the department, unquote, and that a planned, quote, peer support warm handoff, unquote, program has not yet been implemented, unquote, from B B M R's fiscal note. Uh, we have not been able to confirm this, um, these concerns of Guam Behavioral Health. We are hoping they would be here today. All right. And so I'll begin with my questions and then, uh, we will have the other members of the senatorial panel ask questions. The first one is, uh, there's a term used in here of peer support volunteer, and I just want to ask maybe Attorney Summerfleck, is this term a a defined term, something normally used? Uh, these are who, uh, a person can be left with at the hospital, a peer support volunteer.
The Guam Behavioral is developing standard operating procedures along with the qualifications for the peer support individual. So, and as with regard to the funding, I believe this is through a nonprofit that's funded through Guam Behavioral, Tohge, where the volunteers and the training is coming from. I know that they're working on a pilot project. I'm not sure if that that the funding they have is only for the three-month pilot project. Um, but that's all I can disclose. And I I have, I have received standard operating procedures, Guam Police Department warm handoff. I don't know if this is just a draft document. I believe it might be. Um, but it does put forward, you know, quite a rigorous training schedule. Thirty hours at peer academy, thirty hours trauma-informed care, forty hours crisis intervention training, seven hours compassion fatigue, HIPAA training. It's, I can go through the whole list, but those are the major items on it, though.
All right, that's, uh, that was my next question was to ask how, which, what type of training would they have and would that suffice? So this Tohge program, T O H G E, Tohge, I believe it's pronounced, the, I have discussed that with behavioral health, uh, maybe even a year ago. And I was, I I I thought that program was already in place. Uh, so I guess, like you said, they're doing a pilot program. Hopefully, yeah, can do more of that. But, um, Chief, do you currently have a procedure, anything like this, that this bill is proposing?
Uh, Madam Speaker, we are going, and that's why, uh, you you probably didn't get much from behavioral health because it's still a work in progress. Uh, we have been actively actively meeting with Guam Behavioral Health, uh, if not on a weekly basis, then at least a biweekly basis so that we can iron out, uh, the M O U and establish the standard operating procedures, pretty much the rules and regulations that will govern how, uh, we're going to be working on, uh, these warm handoffs.
All right. Thank you very much. And I see.
Madam Speaker?
Yeah, Chief Prosecutor O'Malley has, uh, joined us and I would like to invite him to testify, please.
I wasn't going to participate in this one, but I I can't sit on my hands any longer. Uh, I do handle, uh, in addition to other duties, I I cover a mental health court, uh, for the office. And so I appear in front of Judge Barcenas, who's in charge of the mental health court from the judiciary. Uh, and then we've had to share many of the headaches. And of course, I work with, uh, Chief Ignatius on these, uh, a couple of things. Uh, one, I want to really emphasize what, uh, uh, Dan Summerfleck mentioned, the appearance of a uniform. A lot of times when there's an incident uh, that has been reported and Guam Police must respond, the appearance of the uniform, uh, exacerbates the problem. I know Guam Behavioral, uh, this is from my covering the mental health court, uh, cases for some time now. Uh, they keep talking about creating a crisis response team. Uh, and I've not seen that really come to fruition yet. And that is before we do anything else to change, the the Guam Behavioral must get this crisis response team up and running. Uh, we had a situation just a couple of days ago, uh, where I had to jump in and, um, we had an individual who he was a forty-nine-year-old man and he attacked his father with a stick and and beat him pretty bad with a stick. Uh, so he was about to be arrested. The the problem was, uh, I looked at his prior record and it was very clear in his psyche evaluation. Um, you know, he has some serious mental health issues. He has no business going to the Department of Corrections. Uh, Guam Behavioral should intervene in this kind of situation. And the last line of this, uh, the psyche valve, which, uh, basically echoes of Mr. Summerfleck says is the family needs to come up with a program with Guam Behavioral to avoid law enforcement interaction. Uh, because it does, uh, create a problem. I I do understand the chief's headaches. Uh, it does tie up their officers for many hours up at Guam Memorial Hospital. And and I agree that the warm handoff, uh, where Guam Behavioral, uh, personnel show up and and can provide the the support while the person is being evaluated, uh, before he's transported, uh, whether it's going to be an involuntary hold or voluntary submission. Um, I wasn't really prepared to provide testimony, but, um, I couldn't keep quiet any longer. Sorry, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much for joining us and for your testimony. I think it's very helpful. Yeah, I'm, uh, actually surprised to hear that there isn't a crisis response team in place because I know we talked about this right after that incident at the Two Lovers Point. And that, uh, that was, you know, one of the, yeah, very urgent concerns for the police department and behavioral health and and of course, our entire community, that we have a a response team that will not further exacerbate the situation. Um, okay, so we we will pursue um, that with behavioral health, but I thank all of you for your testimony. And we're now going to open it up to the other senators. I'll begin with Senator Moylan to sponsor it.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, I defer my statement to the ending. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Taitikui, you're recognized.
To do as much as I can, Madam Speaker, and thank you for being here. It's good to see you, Chief. And as always, um, Attorney Summerfleck, um, I I knew you would be here and I was wondering, uh, Mr. Summerfleck, did you? Mr. Summer Flick, did you have a hand at, at this legislation at all? Help craft this legislation at all?
No, I did not.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the comments that you made and the suggestion that you made, but it's, it's very difficult, you know, to, ask the questions I have because majority of it is for Guam Behavioral Wellness. Um, I have some concerns, you know, with determining the, the, um, condition of a patient or someone who's brought to behavioral wellness by a peace officer rather than someone who's trained. And then, you know, trained in the field to determine, uh, the, well, you, you took away damage to him or herself, such was your comments. So to determine that, it's, it's usually by people who are, have, you know, psychiatric background or technician or, but you know, the question I did have for Guam Behavioral Wellness was, um, if they had a peer support volunteer program. And if not, why, why would this bill identify this particular type of volunteer system as opposed to authorizing, you know, a psychiatric technician or Guam Behavioral Wellness, a security guard to remain with the client in the absence of a peace officer? So if Guam Behavioral Wellness is listening or, uh, to this recording of this public hearing, hopefully they can answer that question when they provide their testimony. I just see sometimes, you know, legislation, people create legislation and it's actually putting the, uh, cart before the carabao sometimes when there's a program already, um, up and running right now. And, uh, instead of, you know, assisting that program to see it through, um, we're, we're dictating, you know, for them. So I'm anxious to see how far along Guam Behavioral Wellness, has moved forward. And the training background, uh, you know, with, with peace officers, uh, maybe I can ask you this, uh, Chief, you know, what training background does or will a peace officer have to help make a proper determination that a person is not a danger to self, is not a danger to others, or, or is not gravely disabled because of mental health, a mental illness and is compliant?
Senator, uh, Titegui, this bill and the intent, uh, with this bill is not for the peace officer, the police officer to make that determination. What, what we're doing is when we get to mental health, currently the law requires us to stay until the process and procedure is complete. What we're trying to do with this bill is that when we get to mental health or even maybe to the the hospital, because sometimes we get stuck at the hospital, waiting for, uh, them to be evaluated before they get down to, uh, Guam Behavioral Health, is that when we get to the hospital, we can employ the peer support volunteer or whoever is going to be the authorized representative from Guam Behavioral Health to come up to the hospital and make that determination that, uh, this person, uh, is no longer a threat. Uh, that could be by, by behavior or action, uh, or, you know, whatever other means that they have. And so that we can, uh, relinquish that person now over to the Guam Behavioral Health, peer support volunteer, whoever the, the person is authorized to be there, and so that we can go back to patrolling and doing our work. So right now, we're currently stuck with them until we actually turn them physically over to Guam Behavioral Health.
Okay, so, so you're saying now that it's for you, this would give you the authority to call the peer support group to come to the hospital. And then they would evaluate these individuals who are on the peer support group. They have the, the, the knowledge and the skill to determine of individual is not, um, well, is a threat because of course with, you know, it's about the safety too, to all the, the people at the hospital, you know, the nurses and the doctors and definitely those who are there, uh, seeking treatment, that they're safe at all times. Um, but can't you do that already? I mean, if you were to call the peer support group, who I, I believe, I hope is certified with Guam Behavioral Wellness, is certified in, in, in that field to, to make that determination, um, why can't you do that right now?
Not, not yet, uh, because of the way it's done now, uh, following the current law. We're actually, uh, have to stay with this person all the way up until we drop them off and they enter the facility. Uh, so, so e- even the early on, uh, and so again, you know, I don't want to get in front of what's, uh, what's being done with this crisis intervention team. But I, I think that's really going to help alleviate some, a lot of the downtime with the Guam Police Department.
So this crisis innovation team that you're talking about that Guam Behavioral Wellness is, is trying to do the, um, they would be the person in the event that you need to call to relieve yourself from overseeing, um, the safety of the hospital or with that particular.
Actually, the, the intent of the crisis intervention team is to get them out when we go to respond to the call.
To get them out.
They would be the responders to the call. Our job is secondary to provide support to them, to make sure that there's no, uh, that they're not in harm's way.
Yeah, and this is hence what, what, uh, Attorney Summer Flick, as well as, um, Mr. O'Malleyn, Attorney O'Malleyn was talking about the, the visual perspective of the uniform. And that this, um, yeah, group coming forward is to, to help eliminate that. And that's right now what they're, they're doing at Guam Behavioral Wellness. So they're trying to find that type of intervention. But at this point, so you have no authority whatsoever to call somebody with that, uh, background to give a, uh, an opinion, uh, to relieve.
Yes, so, so currently, right, right now as the law is written, we, we have to stay with that person.
Okay, and then, um, once that's cleared, then the individual, um, can a doctor actually determine that at the hospital, whether, um, an individual is, is okay and that they're, they're fine? Can a doctor be the one to relieve you?
Not, not, and, and that's, see, that's the problem is that with current practice, uh, when, when a doctor is doing, uh, the evaluation at GMH, it's really just to be sure that the person is physically safe enough to turn over to, uh, Guam Behavioral Health. So, so it's, it's like a two-step process currently. Uh, we respond to like a, a PIN to a person who need a service. Uh, we determine that the person needs to go to maybe involuntary seventy-two hour hold. But before we take him down to, uh, Guam Behavioral Health, we have to bring that person to Guam Memorial, uh, Hospital to get evaluated medically. Wait for blood tests, wait for the screening by a nurse and a doctor, and that could take hours, uh, at, at, uh, GMH. Then once it's clear, we have to, we bring them down to Guam Behavioral Health, wait for the intake process again. So that, that's a minimum three to six hours.
And in the meantime, in the meantime, there has been no evaluation on that individual patient that is brought to Guam Memorial Hospital, determine whether that person is a threat to the staff or to themselves. There's no one to determine that yet. And I think that's what those safety precautions are in place for. You know, um, to make sure everyone is safe at this point. I mean, the doctor looks at you, say he's not a threat, but I guess the doctor's not required to do so.
And that's why we're trying to establish the crisis intervention team.
Right.
To be with us at the onset, uh, and walk, go, go with them through the pro, we go with them through the process as opposed to them going through the process with us right now.
And, and Chief, is there anything in the bill right now that talks about the crisis intervention, uh, group?
Uh, no, but, but in discussion with, with the, the two groups, the Guam Behavioral Health and the Guam Police Department, uh, we found that it was necessary to, to at least get in front of this, so that when we do establish the, the, the team, uh, when Guam Behavioral establishes the team, this would not hinder us from, uh, doing that warm handoff process.
Okay, well, I'm, again, I'm, you know, I'm not going to belabor this any longer. I think I, I get the gist of it. Um, and I think that there's something in the making, but you know, if you, you have Guam Behavioral Wellness saying there is a concern with the legislation as written, as the liability is very high for the department, um, I think that we should pay attention to this. And again, we don't want to put the carabao before the, I mean, the cart before the carabao, you know, and, and moving something forward or dictate something. So I think, uh, I appreciate all the work you're doing and, uh, Captain Chris Castro, it's good to see you, my friend. Thank you for all the hard, hard work you're doing down to the south for us. I appreciate it. And Mr. Summer Flick, always a pleasure and good to hear from you as well on this legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Titegui. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I certainly hear the comments that are being made, uh, with regards to, um, you know, the other side of the House of the Guam Police is challenged with the amount of hours, uh, that certainly can be consumed uh, with regards to, uh, accompanying and having to sit for a while and go through this process while an individual may be, you know, being processed to be transferred to behavioral health or whatever the case may be. Uh, so I hear that, but I think it would be helpful, and they're not here today as mentioned earlier, to give us the insight for behavioral health on what their intake process is. I'm not a mental health expert. I think sometimes we all have challenges with our own mental health insanity every now and then, but, um, the concern I would have, and that's, I think before this bill moves forward, it'd be very good to get feedback from mental health. I certainly would want some comfort with that before I vote on this bill. I understand what, what certainly the chief is saying with regards to time because we don't have enough of our police officers out in the, the field and the need to get them out there to be responsive to other crimes and situations that are occurring in the community. But I, I certainly echo the comments by Senator Titegui. You know, I can't, I can't make that determination. Perhaps those in the profession can uh, in terms of what someone's going to do, either to be a danger to themselves or someone else. And I, I would want some feedback from behavioral health so that we know how they address that now, even if they have someone who's a patient there now, how do they address an immediate safety issue? Uh, somebody can be totally quiet and calm and all of a sudden, for whatever it is, might trigger something in them. Uh, they might be harmful to themselves or the person that's there with them. Uh, and then I don't know to what degree and how quickly behavioral health can respond to assist. Uh, because obviously the individual's being brought in for some reason. It's not just because it's a normal day and everything's fine. They're being brought in for maybe an incident that happened that caused some disturbance, or maybe they were a threat to themselves or someone else. Uh, so I, I, I don't have an objection at this point, but I'm not comfortable yet until we get some feedback. And I don't see anyone else on the panel that can really give us from that side of the aisle uh, feedback on how they process or how can we help facilitate so that as, you know, the chief mentioned, have this, uh, you know, this peer support volunteer, whoever the case may be, who that individual be at the side or the location uh, to assist that person. So that doesn't, you know, you don't want to increase the, the circumstance. You want to decrease any threat and, and keep anyone as calm as possible. But I, I think until I get some feedback from behavioral health, or maybe this bill can be brought back up because certainly you have the authority to bring behavioral health and feedback. Uh, I think that would be helpful so that we can know how the process can go smoothly because we've seen, the chief has seen. I mean, I still remember that one arrest down here at the Ganya precinct where a gentleman was being brought in for potential murder. Uh, you don't grab the gun of a police officer and end up shooting himself. I mean, who would have known at that moment in time, you know, right in front of the precinct, that's, uh, you know, that, that sort of thing could happen. Uh, we don't know. We don't know what, what someone who might be in an unsettled mental state do. And sometimes the quietest people, uh, you think are passive and then all of a sudden you, you get surprised. So I just think, Madam Speaker, it'd be helpful to get the input so that we actually can see the process and are these individuals in place to assist the Guam Police Department? If they are and they can respond and, you know, there's a determination made and, you know, one of the things brought up is if a medical professional is not there to make the assessment, how do we know? I hate the police officer to leave and then all of a sudden the individual harms themselves or harms anybody else. So uh, I'm not going to continue to go in a circle, but that's essentially my main concern. I think until I can hear some feedback on how that can be properly addressed at the other end, uh, I'm just going to pause on this bill. Hopefully you can get them to, uh, provide testimony to us so that we can ask questions and get further feedback. But thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. I, I checked the records and I just, so of course, but behavioral health was informed. Um, and I received a message from the director that said, "Thank you, Speaker Turley, for invitation to provide testimony on Bill two, three, eight next week. I will be off island next week, so won't be present." However, GBHWC will definitely be providing written testimony before the deadline. That's from Director Ariola. So we will follow up. I, it's, it's probably an oversight because they're normally very responsive. So I'm, of course, I don't, I'm not comfortable to report this out without their input as well.
And Madam Speaker, maybe we could have a markup because I, I mean, it's nice to written testimony, but procedurally, I think for us to be able to ask questions, because I'll tell you, the first time if something goes wrong and, and someone, you know, does something and they're left and, and there's no, we don't know what the response is and who can address the situation. Uh, it's going to come all back. It's all going to come back and splatter all over everyone. I hope it doesn't happen, but I mean, you know, things happen. So I, and you're right, they're normally very responsive, but if we could just have a markup meeting and, and if behavioral health can be present so that we can ask questions on what their process is, I'm not aware of what it is myself. Uh, maybe others of the community are not either. So I think it would be helpful considering what's being asked of this, the circumstance that, that we're being asked to adjust change, which I, I empathize with the Guam Police Department here. But again, I just have to like some clear awareness of what exactly is the process on the behavioral health side? And how would they address if something were to happen, if some, you know, an individual being taken in, all of a sudden, uh, you know, becomes a threat to themselves or, or whoever's there staffing and assisting in mental health or the volunteer, what capability they have for doing that.
Thank you, Senator Brown. I appreciate that. Um, we're now here from Senator Shelton, Legislative Secretary.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the panel for being here today for your, um, your comments on the bill, the discussion that we had today. Um, I appreciate the intent of this legislation from Senator Moylan. And I think it's important for us to, uh, focus on, uh, address, addressing issues with, um, our limited resources in mind. So I think that this is import, important. And also, um, I look forward to the, the, um, testimony from behavioral health as well to ensure that we are addressing the mental health aspect of this bill um, with the best practices in mind. And of course, they are the experts to guide us i- in that way. And so I look forward to that, um, and also supporting this bill with, with their, um, support. And, uh, I want to again, thank everyone, uh, the police department, Attorney Summer Flick, Sajus Mossi for your time today. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Legislative Secretary Shelton. Senator Paris, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, and thank you to all that have come here today to testify. Um, so it seems to me that the crisis intervention team is really important to establish that. To allow for, um, you know, some sort of relief, or at least that should be the first line of, of, um, receiving, um, you know, people undergoing mental, mental crisis. But I, I mostly think, and the family plan obviously is important, that there is, um, you know, interworking between, um, you know, government response, crisis response and the family. There should be definitely a plan in place. Um, but in looking at the bill itself, it talks about probable cause. So one of the things the bill, um, it, this bill, uh, would do, it would allow for a peace officer who has probable cause. Uh, and that he contacts, he or she may contact the peer support volunteer group. And I guess the question that I have is, uh, what constitutes probable cause? If anyone can answer that. Maybe Attorney Summer Flick?
More likely than not. You know, when you're, when you're dealing with an individual with mental illness, and I'm sure the police officers have a much better sense of this than I do. You know, if someone is acting absolutely normal, why would they pick them up in the first place? You know, they mentioned a person in need of services. One of our greatest tragedies on Guam is for some reason, individuals with developmental and mental illness lay down on our streets. And we've had a number of individuals with disabilities killed because they're laying down in the street at night and a car runs them over. Our Mary Claire home is named after just an individ, just such an individual. Um, to me, if that would be clearly an indication that they're probable cause, that they're danger to themselves by lying down in the middle of the street. If an individual is brandizing a machete and waving it around, clearly that individual's, there's probable cause to say they're a danger to others. Um, but is, can I give you a bright line test of, you know, how does a police officer make a determination that an individual is a danger to themselves, other than if they're threatening to kill themselves? A danger to others, ever, other than they see them actively being aggressive or gravely disabled because they're lying in the middle of the street or they're refusing to take basic necessities? You know, I think that's very much. You know, I think that's very much a call that, at this level that we're talking about, I think it's police officer common sense. And they have additional training. Now, with regard to the question of how do you determine with some certainty that a person is a danger to themselves, a danger to others, or gravely disabled? It's required in our law that that determination is made by a psychiatrist, a clinical psychologist, a master's level mental health nurse, or a physician. And those are the people by law we've determined are qualified to make a determination to enter into a 72-hour hold. By their own internal policies, Guam Behavioral has put forward that only a psychiatrist or a clinical psychologist is qualified to issue a 72-hour hold. I'm kind of sidestepping your question, and I realize it because, to me, probable cause is is more along the lines of, do I think more likely than not? And that's a difficult position for police officers to be in. You know, but at this level where we're protecting society, and that's really what we're looking at with our GPD officers, someone who's dangerous, you know, someone that's either physically dangerous to others or physically dangerous to themselves or lying in the middle of the street. You know? So I don't have a hard definition of probable cause. Basil may know better because he's the prosecutor. It's pretty much a criminal term, more likely than not that this person is suffering from mental illness, a danger to themselves. I guess would be my answer. As far as making that final determination of a 72-hour hold, that's got to be done by professionals. You know, highly qualified professionals, psychiatrists, you know, clinical psychologists means they're a doctor's level psychologist. You know, or and then the master's level psychiatric nurse, mental health nurse, you know, these are highly qualified individuals with great experience. And then I think the, you guys included physicians just to make sure that, you know, if a psychiatrist or these others aren't available, that a physician can make an admission.
Thank you for that response. But the other side of that coin is, now, how do you determine probable cause to believe that the individual is not a danger to self or to others? So you just mentioned these professionals are needed to make that determination. So I guess this bill would allow the peace officer to make that determination.
This bill would, and that's why I make the suggestion that we're overburdening our police. And we changed the bill from the police officers making a determination that they're not a danger to themselves, others, or gravely disabled, to compliant or non-threatening. You know, that's kind of what I looked at at the bill, and one of my concerns with the bill is we may be overstretching our peace officers, and we may expose them to liability. You know, we're now having them make a probable cause determination that the person's not a danger? Just like Senator Brown was bringing up, or Senator Tidigley was bringing up. You know, how do we know? You know, they may be calm for 30, 40 minutes. And then, as soon as, as soon as a bell sounds, they go into some trauma stage. You know, but at the same time, we need, we need to allocate our resources as effectively as we can. And I, it doesn't make sense to me to have a police officer cool their heels for four to five hours. If I were looking at the ideal, I would look at why aren't we using the nurse practitioners who were working at Guam Memorial Hospital to do the medical assessment right at Guam Behavioral? And they just get dropped off at Guam Behavioral? The medical assessment is done at Guam Behavioral. Guam Behavioral, we eliminate the issue of one of the concerns that I see is here is we've got a mentally ill individual who police officers have brought in, and now they're saying he's not a threat. Well, if we had it in a contained environment, we wouldn't have to worry about that. But I don't want to minimize what I see the importance of this bill. Which is, you know, instead of sitting with someone who's absolutely no threat and sleeping for four hours watching them sleep until they get assessed by a doctor, I personally believe that GPD officers are more valuable in our community than that. You know, and if we could pull them out of a lot of these calls and have this crisis intervention team, that would be the ideal. And the team wouldn't just consist of volunteers who have received training, though, that would consist of volunteers and qualified professionals. So I don't know if I'm over-talking. I apologize if I am.
Is there any response you'd like to make, Attorney O'Malley?
Yeah, thank you, Senator Paris. We had to come back in. I just want to echo and support some points from Mr. Summer Flex. First off, on the probable cause, you know, police officers are trained to determine, did an individual commit a crime? But what the bill is addressing is is a decision that must be made by a health professional and primarily a mental health professional. And then they need to make that call, and I agree with what Mr. Summer Flex said. To put that onus on a police officer, it would be exposing government of Guam to extreme liability. So that goes back to the Guam, Guam Behavioral needs to be more involved in this aspect. Just to add some more to the, this crisis intervention team. Currently, with our mental health cases, as the cases are being adjudicated by Judge Marcina's, one of the things that is insisted upon is there'd be a treatment plan, and part of that treatment plan is, when there is a crisis, the caretakers are supposed to call Guam Behavioral, and the Guam Behavioral Crisis Response Individual assigned to that individual, assigned to that patient, is supposed to be responding, not Guam Police Department. That's the whole purpose of the crisis intervention team. Like I said, it'd be nice if that's fully functional. They've talked about it for several years now. I don't understand the delay in implementing it. It's a bone in, and we want to, I'm afraid Mr. Summer Flex is going to jump in here and start talking again because I know that's a bone he gets most upset about. Why are not Guam Behavioral responding to these crises? But go back to the purpose of the bill. I support that. We cannot tie up our police officers in these situations when it really needs to be Guam Behavioral that's at the scene. And it'll calm everyone down, it'll provide the person with the need, the help that is necessary, not incarceration or tying up a police officer. I'll try to sit here quietly now.
Well, no, thank you. I appreciate all the responses, and that definitely helps bring some clarity to how to move forward. So thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the questions and answers. I want to follow up on one of those. And so, you know, Chief, you said that currently, they take a person to, if, okay, so the the law, not just this bill, but the current law says, if a peace officer has probable cause to believe a person is danger to self, to others, or gravely disabled because of a mental illness, he may bring the person to the department, meaning Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness, or the emergency room of a hospital for exam. And only the police officer can use reasonable force to restrain and detain the person in need of evaluation. Because the law also provides that a private citizen can bring in another private citizen for, in, you know, for determination for involuntary hospitalization. But the force, of course, can only be used by police department. And you're already charged by the law to make this probable cause determination. So first, I want to know, you had said that the process is that they go to GMH first and then behavioral health. And that, so that's not really written in here. It says here they can go to either, but you're telling us now that the practice is that they must go to both?
Yeah. So Guam Behavioral Health will, currently will not take anybody that we're bringing in until such time that they are seen and cleared by a doctor at the Guam Memorial Hospital, the emergency room.
All right, and that was in place prior to COVID?
That's always been the practice since, ever since, as I think Captain Sunny and I were patrol officers.
I understand, I can understand, fashion off of that, drug tests and things, but, okay. So, but are you having any current problem making a probable cause determination?
No, there is no issue with the probable cause determination, especially when we're dealing with, you know, aggressive behavior, like, you know, Chief Prosecutor Basil O'Malley said, you know, where they are mental health issues, but there are also crimes that were being committed. You know, a good example is, you know, unfortunately, is that gentleman who panhandles at Route 1 in ITC. But then, you know, he's the same gentleman that was in a viral video, you know, masturbating, you know, on the park bench. You know, and unfortunately, you know, we had no recourse but to under knowing and recognizing, because he's, we've had priors with him, we've had to, you know, charge him with the crime. And then, you know, hopefully, the system gets him to the mental health needs that he gets. You know, to Attorney Summer Flex's point, you know, about going straight to behavioral health, you know, that is something that is also being looked into that I've had discussions with, that Director Ariola, they're trying to put a process in place where we skip the GMH process and just take him down to Guam Behavioral, where they would do the medical evaluation and the mental health evaluation.
All right, appreciate that. I know that they have hired, for $250,000, a nurse practitioner at the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. So so perhaps that is something that can be done there, if they have lab capabilities or whatever else is necessary. All right, then, my last question is, well, not a question, but just a concern. So Attorney Summer Flex made some recommendations to change the language, and this is after the peace officer has made a determination of probable cause and is bringing someone in after all that, that he may you know, call and leave this person with a peer support volunteer. Okay, so, and we're going to hone in on, of course, how these are going to be defined, you know, and MOU, if we're going to put this in statute, we're going to have to also put that, those types of criteria into statute for the peer support volunteer and determine what's the difference, this peer support volunteer being contacted, you know, after the fact, or the crisis intervention team that should be contacted, you know, in advance or ahead of the process, right before the police intervention. But what I would like is a Chief Prosecutor O'Malley, if you could please, I'm going to ask Attorney Summer Flex, if you could put your testimony in writing, it's your recommendations, you know, we would try as well, but your recommendations for changes to the statute or the bill? I'd like the chief prosecutor's input on those changes specifically. It's a determination, Chief, maybe I could just ask you right now as well, you're going to determine if a person is compliant or non-compliant according to Attorney Summer Flex's recommendations? Would you be able to do that?
Yes, we'll put it in writing.
But you can make a determination of a person who is compliant or non-compliant?
Yeah, I think that, you know, to Attorney Summer Flex's point, you know, I think we just rely on our observation or common sense, you know, that this person's not a threat. So I'll give an example. We've gotten calls for a family member, usually a guardian or like a mother or father of their son or daughter who stopped taking medication. And so they start to act out during the early stages. And so we come there, they become compliant with the police, telling them, hey, look, you know, your mom called us, you stopped taking your medication. We're going to take you into Guam Behavioral. And then, of course, first stop is GMH. And then, next stop is Guam Behavioral. Yeah, but I think those are the instances where, you know, the person's compliant, they understand that, you know, they're going to go back in to be seen. And we just need to take him into Guam Behavioral. Some of the other instances, we've had people just make threats. I think there was a case recently, maybe two, three weeks ago, maybe a little bit longer. Person just was calling in, you know, making threats, I forget which agency. And we were able to track it down, determine it. It was a client of mental health, and we coordinated with them. And they actually went to the house to bring in the person instead of us responding. Because they were well familiar with the person calling in the threats.
Okay, and I promise my final question is, what does, what happens at the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center if somebody comes in either, you know, voluntarily or brought in by someone else, not a police officer? And yet, then they become non-compliant or seemingly a threat? What happens then? Is the police called in, or do they have their own to handle that?
I believe they have their own internal staff. Maybe Basil, yeah.
Actually, we had that situation about a month ago where a female patient of theirs became very combative and started throwing chairs at the staff. And so Guam Police were called to the scene. The person was arrested and taken to the Department of Corrections, and was charged criminally. So that does happen. It's very frustrating because, you know, I think the position of, oh, yes, they do act up, and you should be able to handle them yourselves, but that's what happened in that situation, and it happens more than once. When some becomes non-compliant, becomes violent, in their opinion violent, they immediately call Guam Police Department, which has to respond.
All right, I would appreciate any recommendations, Chief Prosecutor, that you might have in this regard or in related matters, and as well as you, Chief. And I thank both of you, Captain Castro, Chief Ignacio, Attorney O'Malley, and of course, Attorney Summer Flex for your input. Very, very important and critical and very helpful to us today. I would now invite the sponsor of the bill, Senator Moilen, to close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you to the panel. Chief, I'm sorry, Chief Prosecutor O'Malley, thank you very much for bringing us back to what this bill is about, putting back on the focus of what the main topic of this bill is about. Of course, we all have some great want to explore a lot more of what, how we can help individuals with mental health, but what this bill is truly about. And basically, we're giving the flexibility for the peace officers as professionals to determine that and working with Department of Behavioral Health. Miss Attorney Summer Flex, those are some really good recommendations, and I thank you. And again, I thank you for bringing the point back to what this bill is all about. You hit it on the nose. When they're, we don't need their cool heels, right? Talking about the police officers, they're cooling their heels when they can be on the streets protecting our society when it's determined by these professionals that it's okay for them to release. But I also appreciate your recommendations, and we don't want to keep our heels of our police officers too cold. Otherwise, you know, they're going to get itchy to get out there and do some stuff. Captain Castro, sir, you've had how many years' experience with the Guam Police Department?
Thirty, 35 years.
I think you know a lot more about mental health issues and how we can help our people with that, and I appreciate the recommendation that you, with your experience, has in dealing with this and recommending this as helpful for the Guam Police Department. Chief Ignacio, I also want to acknowledge you for giving us some numbers. From November to February, you've had 11 people that have needed your assistance. So thank you for protecting our society, and thank you for protecting those that needed that service and getting that. Chief, how many years of experience have you have with the department?
34 years.
Yeah, you're excellent, man, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the recommendations that when the police department came, I was fortunate enough to work with you folks and understanding that this is something you both are working on to support not only those with mental illness, but also the Guam Police Department, so you can utilize your resources correctly. So with that, Madam Chair, or Madam Speaker, I want to thank, thank the panel, and I'm looking forward to moving this bill fast, quickly. It's better that we do something than nothing at all. So I thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, panel.
Thank you, Senator Moilen. We would definitely
Thank you, Senator Moylan, we will definitely take into account the testimony that's been provided and make sure that we have a a workable policy. And incorporating all the concerns as well. Okay, I I thank you again for your presence here today. We're gonna move on to our third agenda item. I want to thank those who have been waiting for this third agenda item, it is Bill number one-two-seven-dash-thirty-six L S. It is sponsored by Senator James Moylan, and I would invite the sponsor to introduce the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, uh one-twenty-seven-thirty-six L S. Is an Act to amend Chapter forty-nine, a Title IX Guam code annotated, is relative to modernizing. The statute associated with public corruption, official misconduct. And other unlawful influences and related offenses. It's about the trust and confidence that the people have in our uh in the use and spending of the taxpayers' dollar dollars. By our government officials who may engage in illicit behavior for personal gains. And whereas they should be held at the highest standard. It's about modernizing by adding in terms of public corruption, official misconduct, unlawful influence. This, why we need this is because our community has trust, and they want to continue that trust and confidence in the public servants. Uh that are there to protect the people, and if we're circumventing policies, if we're engaging in illicit behavior for personal gain. Uh that's what we need to deter. And who this will help, it's it's our community, it's our community that wants to have the trust and confidence in our public service. So what the bill does, really, it makes it official misconduct, a third degree felony rather than a misdemeanor. It makes different penalties and help heavier fines, and it's sending out a strong message. That the public corruption will not be tolerated. So I'm uh Madam Speaker, and probably later on after we hear testimonies, I do need to also read a testimony that I've received. Because the individual is not here, so I appreciate, I look forward to the recommendations and comments on this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. All right, we will now um hear from Setfree Lisanian, Mr. Lisanian, thank you for waiting.
Madam Speaker, can you hear me?
Yes, but can you turn on your video, please?
Uh the host is stopped my uh video.
All right, just a second. Thank you very much, Mr. Lisanian.
Uh thank you, Madam Speaker, uh good afternoon, my name is Setfree Lisanian. I'm a small business owner for forty-two years. With that experience, I can read the minds of people, especially in the procurement. Especially in contracts. As public service is a public trust, and they have to disperse their duties. In accordance with the law, not with their own ideologies. Yeah, I have to thank Senator Moylan for introducing this bill, and I strongly support it. Because it covers all public officials, including the hearing officers. And others that appointed by O P A and uh other uh referee, arbitrator. And uh etcetera. Now, the the way I look at it, that's why there's so many, there's some appeals. It's because of ego, you know, what's happening is the lawyers of every agency. They value their ego over the law. They value winning the case over correcting the procurement officer. Whoever is is in charge of disversing the contracts. Because we were, we were given to raise our concern for resolution in the procurement appeal. But all of our concern were rejected in its entirety, not only me, but all other vendors. That's why I said that, a lawyer of a government agency being paid by a taxpayer. Of Guam, like me, trying to make a living, and then. You know, will be enforcing his his ego. Up to the extent of violating the law, wherein it's very clear in the procurement. That all appellants may be represented by an attorney. Yeah, I said that because I have experienced it. Now. And uh that bill has a good good intention. That that the problem is this, who will implement, who will subsidize the adjudication? That's the problem, because it takes money to adjudicate, to hire a lawyer. If you want not to convict an official or a procurement officer or somebody dispersing the contract. You know, they were backed up by by so many layers, lawyers in their agency, and these lawyers will depend them. Put a nail, even reversing the law in order to win. They will not even advise the uh those officers, those procurement officers to, looks like this vendor is correct. You know, you you have to follow the law, Mister Mister Procurement Officer, but no, that's that's not the system for the lawyers. They will stick with their ego of winning the case, even though they know it's wrong, they know it's wrong. Yeah, because it's very clear in the law, but they will act as a lawyer. Trying to win and satisfy their agency. Uh trying to make a name of themselves, you know, elevating their ego that they want the case. And then this poor guy, but is not represented by a lawyer, you know, gonna have hard time up to the point that he'll be disqualified. Because he's not a lawyer, even though the procurement law is very clear for thirty years. Since O P A was was established, they allow Brosa to represent the company. Because of their independence, they are free from judicial, legislative, and executive. Oh, I said O P A because I think. This is a good chance for the malpractice arbitration act. It is related because it could help them, because in O P A, you don't file any filing fee. Not like in malpractice arbitration, they pay five thousand dollars, and how could they afford that? See, but as a small business owner, we have that, that uh, what you call the previous. That we that we can file a case without filing any any fee, and we can represent uh ourselves. Or hire a lawyer. Now, in order to prevent this, I believe that all hearing officer or referee or arbitrator. Should be confirmed by the legislature. They need to be vetted by the public, they they are, if they have the integrity, or if they will enforce the law. That's what's happening, they will enforce their own ideology, they want to elevate the lawyer's status, that that only then can. Can uh adjudicate, you know, the case, but in fact, it's very clear. It's been, it's been for thirty years, and then suddenly, you know, one one hearing officer will come in and and make that decision. And the O P A didn't do anything, you know, that's the case, it might as well abolish O P A. We just filed the case to the Superior Court, so we just have to, we can save money. So we just hire a lawyer one time, and then you you like to make an appeal, appeal to the Guam Supreme Court. So what's happening now, because of this hearing officer making the decision, every time I make an appeal, I have to hire a lawyer now. You know, and then if I lost the case, I have to go to the Superior Court, hire a lawyer again. You know, and then, so it's double, double expenses for us, and we are facing a a government lawyer. By the agency that's being paid by us. That 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 that's the situation here, and and that's why uh. Even if it has good intention, how could you, how could you convict, how could you prove your case? Because it needs to be adjudicated and convicted by the court. You know, will that will that Attorney General provide the lawyer to prosecute this public official or procurement officer? Or sometimes uh we just, we just let it go, or most of the time, or we just let, you know. Divide intervention uh take effect, whatever it is, or otherwise, we just wait for our turn. That if they'll become, they have a higher aspiration in the future, will be there opposing them and. We'll expose them what they did, so they will not be confirmed, they want to be judged, or they want to be officer of a government agency. That's why, that that that's the only cost, you don't want to spend thirty thousand dollars to. To prosecute the an officer or a public official, you know, it needs to be Attorney General, the same thing with the uh. Malpractice Arbitration Act, you need to waive the uh the filing fee of five thousand, so people can. Can file a case, and Attorney General should help them, if they cannot represent themselves, because it's related. You know, because you're giving up that opportunity to, without any filing fee. That's why uh, yes, I I I support this bill, but that but it's hard to to convict somebody. You know, without all the resources, you know, the lawyer will do everything to reverse the law in court, up to the extent that. If you will be disqualified for so many technicality, you know, and then your your case will not be heard. Like the judge will rule no standing or no jurisdiction or or everything in the world that would. That that, so that your case will not be heard, and then they won the case already. And then uh, yeah, it's very clear, if we file a case in uh at the O P A. Even they want the case, they cannot collect their attorney's fee. Unless our case or our appeal is pre-boosted, but we are entitled to cause. In case we uh we want the appeal, all my appeals, I never asked for money. I just asked the uh, all the issues to be corrected, I never asked for a for any entitlement of cause. You know, the, yeah, but but other people, other appellants. That that's the biggest problem, they're just gonna let it go because they don't have the money, you know, to hire a lawyer. Because it would, it would take a while, that's why uh, as much as I support this bill. You should find a way to 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 support tho- those people. That would uh highly complain against this, against these uh agencies. That is uh holding millions of funds for their for their own disbursement. Just like for example, the Buy American Act, you know, how many times one agency did not follow the Buy American Act? They bought the one made in Israel, I lost twenty-eight thousand dollars profit, and the second, we are the lowest bidder. And then they bought the one in China, I wasn't able to beat it, could have earned two hundred thousand dollars, because I'm representing the U S, U S factory. Well, and uh, yes, that that's that's my uh my my concern here. Uh is uh the uh, how you, how you gonna get these people convicted without. You know, they don't have the money, the resources, so you have to support them. Just uh same thing with the people in the uh malpractice, with those victims. How could you, how could they claim justice if they cannot afford the filing fee of five thousand, and then they cannot afford the lawyer to? Now, this is something that the government should should invest on, and it's worth investing it, because it would improve. You know, the uh economy, and it will improve the uh service, uh the medical service to to everybody. Uh thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lisanian, for your testimony, very helpful and and thoughtful and uh um. Provoking, I think, of uh some other issues that we have to address as well. Um of course, thank you for your patience today. If you could hold on, I'd like to ask a few questions, but I'm going to ask Chief Prosecutor O'Malley for testimony first.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, Madam Speaker, I keep messing you up, I apologize. Thank you for the opportunity to present testimony in Bill one-twenty-seven dash thirty-six. We're still reviewing this bill, but we wanted to let the commission and the committee know that we support the general intent of this bill. Of strengthening the penalties for crimes associated with public corruption and official misconduct. Our office recognizes the distinct harm created when a public official abuses her or his authority and commits a crime. In recognition of the unique harm suffered by our community in those cir- in those circumstances. We recently adopted a policy encouraging our prosecutors to negotiate sentencing ranges in a resolution of those cases. However, not all official misconduct is the same. As with any crime, there is a spectrum of unlawful conduct that could range from stealing five dollars from a register to using. Uh a situation like Mr. Lisanian has demonstrated here. Uh the current language seems to make all official misconduct offenses felonies. We think it should be remaining a range between misdemeanors to felonies. Um and adopt, New Jersey has an approach for official misconduct that we uh have looked at, and we think. Could be very helpful in modifying the current bill. Uh we also want to point out, however, that criminal charges are just one of the potential consequences for government employees. Arrest and conviction can also lead to adverse action at the administrative level, and it should. Uh that's all I have, I hate to uh talk and run, but I've I've got an attorney and an investigator waiting. Uh to to take care of a case for tomorrow, um I would like to support, submit additional testimony in writing. Uh or work with Senator Moylan uh in the future on uh fine tuning this bill, but thank you for bringing this up, sir.
Yes, Attorney O'Malley, are you able to prosecute bid tempering and disclosure of confidential criminal justice information currently?
I believe we can, I believe we can uh modify, work with the law that is existing, but it it's one of those areas that. You know, when anytime you get into a a vague area, it it works against the prosecutor. And so if we could uh fine tune that, it'd be better.
Well, it's unfortunate you have to leave, I I.
I am sorry.
Here, my colleagues have questions for you, as do I, and so um. You're gonna have to find a way to get additional input on this bill, uh but I appreciate your time today and your input.
Thank you.
If you have any further suggestions or recommendations, please send them to the committee, to my office, thank you. Mr. Lisanian, if I can just say, state real quickly, um I think that's all the people here to testify today, so. Uh Mr. Lisanian, yeah, I I I hear your point, and uh I I didn't think about it earlier, but you're correct that uh. Uh we're talking in this bill about public officials' actions, right, uh public corruption or um. Official misconduct, things like this, so these are done by public officials, public uh employees, government employees. And yet, uh yeah, so we are counting on the Attorney General's Office to prosecute those claims. And yet, yet, it's the Attorney General's Office that that actually represents these um agencies in. Um procurement, as you described very fully, procurement issues and and defends the agencies. Throughout the procurement process, if there's a an appeal over the O P A or further to the court. And um of course, it's the Attorney General's Office that does advise the agencies on almost everything, except for the autonomous agencies. Who are able to hire their own counsel and uh, you know, get that person. Uh appointed by the A G as as an Assistant Attorney General for those matters. But um, but I I really very much appreciate your testimony, there's a, there's a lot of things in there to discuss. I want to note for the record that we've received written testimony. From the, from Benjamin J F Cruz, a public auditor. From J B Palash's former G P D officer and drug agent, and from Devon Shane T Duennas, a constituent. We requested feedback on Bill 127, specifically from the Office of Public Accountability, the Judiciary of Guam, the Guam Bar Association, the Office of Attorney General, and the Guam Ethics Commission. According to BBMR and its fiscal note on this bill, fiscal impact may result in potential increase in fines collected for crimes of a similar nature. Effect of the passage may be dependent on the extent to which a proposed legislation translates into increased caseloads and responsibilities. BBMR is unable to determine the amount of personnel needed to handle the caseloads. Of course, this is a question for the Attorney General who, uh, office is not represented currently, who had to leave earlier. Uh, there were also some recommendations from the legal review of the bill from the Guam Legislature's Legal Bureau. Uh, some definitions that need to be clarified, including the definition of material information. And, uh, also some changes to, you know, reflect the, the, the changes to statute that are being made in the bill in the title as well. Um, Senator Moylan, I know you said you wanted to read one of the testimonies. Uh, yeah, you're welcome to read any testimony right now. If, is it someone not, not listed by me earlier? Is it additional testimony or one of those? You're welcome to read any written testimony.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you to the panel. This testimony that was asked to read because the person presenting it says he has grandpa duties and won't be able to participate. So it says, "When is Zama- Mago Thursday, Honorable Senators of the Thirty-Six Guam Legislature, the viewing public and the people of Guam, Guam who see J. P. Palacios, a former Guam Police Department Officer and Drug Agent, and later the Director of Department of Corrections Guam. I experienced firsthand the devastation and carnage of criminal offenses in general, wherein the victims and as well as the offenders are individualized, identified, and comes with a name. As the Director of Corrections, I would like to, I would talk to repeated offenders and ask why would they want to come back to DOC? Because I know it's not, it's not the food. The jaw-dropping moment hits you when their response is, sir, committing the crime is the hard part. The sentencing is a piece of steak. Public corruption and official misconduct offenses only indiv- individualizes the offenders. The people we swore to serve and protect as police officers, the people we swore to serve as public servants. We, the people of Guam, are the victims of public corruption and official misconduct offenses. We are not mentioned by name in any investigative's report or mentioned by name in whole in sentencing as victims. While some might say that harsher penalties don't necessarily deter criminal offenses, I would share with them a saying that we have as police officers. If I could deter one crime from being committed today, then I did my job. Senator Moylan's Bill 127-36 addresses that. I support the Bill 127-36. Jesus was mercy to Allah. God bless and be safe. Esta, see, J. B. Palacios." Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Moylan. Did you have any questions for the panel?
Uh, I thank the panel for, for their statements and I look forward also to, uh, improving the bill based on the recommendations that we're hearing and especially getting back to Attorney O'Malley. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Titikli, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It was very disappointing that the Attorney O'Malley had to leave because once again, we have questions to ask him with regards to this legislation. And it becomes very difficult for us to move forward on anything without that input. Um, even when, when it requires, uh, well, not requires, when they provide the written testimony, later time you have a lot of questions. But then again, I can always reach out to Mr. O'Malley and myself if I have any questions. But, Madam Speaker, it's important to think, you know, with the fiscal note that was presented, you know, um, when you were reading it, 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 yeah, I know you were jumping for the sake of time. But it's important to read this section that BBMR had indicated. Um, and it's the last sentence, "Where additional personnel may be required to take on these added caseloads. However, due to the unknown variable regarding the number of new cases that may arise, the Bureau is unable to determine the amount of personnel needed to handle such caseloads." Yeah, this is the one thing I wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Attorney O'Malley with regards, if this would really, you know, add the extra workload for the Attorney General's Office. We already know they're really strapped at this point, but, um, the other, well, other questions is just to find out how many in the system, the, if there was any allegations of official misconduct, bribery, misuse, taxpayer fund, et cetera, uh, carried out by public, uh, employees or including elected officials. What measures are in place to protect identity of those who put it alleged wrongdoing? Uh, what, what have they done, uh, in, in their timeline since he's actually, he's not here, determine, uh, certain cases that have moved forward with regards to these, any of these crimes or violations? And of course, the inclusion of the, you know, official misconduct, you know, and, and definition. There's, there's a lot of questions, man. And I know it's been a long day for us, you know, being on here almost three hours, but I greatly appreciate, uh, Mr. Lusangan, uh, for you being here and testifying, um, as well, and appreciate the opportunity, Madam Chair, to make comments and hope that we can hear from, the Attorney General's Office as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with you full-heartedly. And, and I did send a letter prior to the hearing to the Attorney General's Office to ask exactly how many cases under this chapter of the code had been prosecuted. I do not have a response from the Attorney General's Office, but I, I got, I sent a similar letter to the Chief of Police and did receive a response to, from the Police Department. So official misconduct cases in 2019, there were seven. 2020, there were eight. 2021, there were three. For bribery, in 2019, there was one case. 2020, no cases. 2021, one case. This is by the Police Department again. Uh, gratuity, giving of gratuity, there was no case in 2019, one case 2020, no case in 2021. Unlawful influence, according to the Police Department, none for 2019, one for 2020, and none for 2021. Of course, yeah, yes.
These are all convicted cases, cases that have been.
Absolutely not. So the Police Department's only in charge of complaints that were filed or arrests, right? So they, they compile that information. That's why I've also asked the Attorney General for their report as to how many were prosecuted. And, uh, of course, I'm hoping they include the results of that prosecution, but yeah. So these are, these are kind of like a, the set of cases that could have been prosecuted and the Attorney General, you know, may have a subset of these that they actually went forward with prosecution. But yeah, so I thought the numbers would, would also help us in our analysis. Okay. And, um, all right. So Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly, appreciate the introduction of this bill. I introduced a bill with regards to official misconduct last year and had a hearing a year ago, uh, primarily to prohibit the rehiring of, uh, government officials that have been convicted of official misconduct because currently in our government, that's a common practice that we're seeing. Uh, certainly, I think we have an expectation that public officials, and to me, as I've mentioned time and time again, I think anyone who works for the government of Guam is a public official. I mean, the tendency is to look at elected, uh, officials, directors, people at the top of an agency or department. Uh, but you also have the classified service and many that have been there for many years. Most of our employees, I think, are very good. They come into work, they do their job every day and they're very responsible. Unfortunately, there's always that certain percentage, small that it may be. I mean, just reading the figures that you have, it seems like it's not that big an issue, but those are the cases that are actually perhaps reported and are determined to be found or cases actually are filed. But, you know, my thirty-three-plus years in government, um, it's not as uncommon as one would think in terms of influencing public resources or, uh, being in a position of trust and confidence. And yet, you know, behind the scenes, there's a very different reality of what goes on and how people take advantage of the circumstance and the authorities that they're given and abuse their position, uh, to either benefit themselves or others that are connected to them. So I don't have any problem, um, you know, addressing increased penalties. Uh, I certainly hope that we will have another opportunity. I think it'd be very helpful again. I, I don't see it as common in hearings these days. I see one hearing and, and, you know, except for medical malpractice, very rarely is there a follow-up, but I would, uh, hope that we could have a discussion with the Attorney General's Office to get more feedback. I understand Attorney O'Malley had another commitment waiting, so I certainly can appreciate that. But I think it'd be helpful to actually get further discussion with regards to this bill on how we can strengthen it. Uh, so that, you know, people have a sense of thought, maybe a second or third thought before they actually engage in some of the things that they do. Uh, because it happens. It, it, it's happening with some frequency, all the way down from jobs to favors to contracts. Uh, it's just not in writing, but the people that know the inside information can connect the dots and we see that abuse. It's, it's not as uncommon. I hate to be jaded, but you know, after so many years of, of seeing some of this stuff go on and many public officials that get away with it. Um, you know, and the whole idea of some administrations, that's the whole purpose running. It's, it's, uh, you know, the, the victor to the victor go the spoils. From contracts to other favors to hiring. Uh, and I'd like to see that strengthened in government because I want public officials to be accountable. And that's not always the case. Uh, and it, it, it really removes a lot of sense of confidence and trust that our public has in their own government when they see and hear of these abuses and almost very little. Unless it's a really high-profile case, in some cases, unless it's a federal case. It's very rare that our local government, not uncommon, but rare that our local government even investigates and least of all prosecute these cases. Uh, so again, I, I would like to hear more from Attorney O'Malley or anyone else who'd be the representative from the Attorney General's Office, like the range that was brought up because it might be a small offense involving a few dollars. It might be a case of thousands. It might be a case of millions of dollars. And certainly, we would want the penalty to be appropriate and connected to the, you know, the violation or whatever had occurred. But I think we would like to have our public officials on notice. You know, it's nothing to take for granted. When you're given that opportunity for public trust, uh, we'd not, we would not want these individuals to abuse it. And I think we, we need to strengthen that. As, as very much, I'm an advocate and, you know, I don't know, Madam Speaker, how bills get referred because my bill was simply to prohibit the rehiring of individuals convicted of official misconduct. It ended up in another committee and it's stuck in committee. So maybe I might have to ask the Rules Committee because I don't know how they're determining what bill goes where. Um, but, you know, specifically related to official misconduct, which is under your jurisdiction in the, in this particular bill with this committee. So those are my comments, certainly, Madam Speaker, but I hope we can arrange another follow-up, not just in writing, but with the Attorney General's Office, just to get more input as well, so that we can further strengthen the bill and support, uh, the initiative here by Senator Moylan to move this issue forward. For that, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. And, and just, I did, I did vote to report your bill out, so I do hope that gets out as well.
Yes, you do. And I, I do appreciate that, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. And, um, yes, I, I'm, as I'm looking over this, uh, bill, I, I see it, it, it's actually a very important bill uh, because it addresses some of the, some of the issues that have been spoken of, uh, in the public regarding, you know, corruption, uh, misconduct. And, um, you know, when I'm looking at the bill, it's very clear that there are no, um, penalties or there's a, a very minimal amount of penalties associated with these types of offenses. Um, but yeah, I look forward to hearing what the, the feedback is regarding, uh, uh, from, you know, Chief Prosecutor regarding what, what is the proper way to scale these type of, um, uh, the monetary offenses, that is. Yeah, and this is very much in line with the work that I've been doing as far as more of the proactive measures, as far as ethics training, uh, requiring ethics training for all government of Guam employees. Um, and, and reforming a lot of procurement, uh, laws that we have in place, strengthening those laws. So I think this is the, the other side of it where, uh, it would act as a deterrent also uh, from those, um, you know, potentially, um, you know, doing these offenses. Um, so the one, one question that I have though is, um, you know, for, uh, Attorney Lusangan. So if I, if I heard this correctly, um, you were saying that attorneys, so the attorney fee might be a, a barrier to actually, um, prosecution of these types of offenses. Are you, is it, are you suggesting perhaps that one of the, uh, or perhaps one of the ways to address that could be, um, you know, should the prosecution be successful that, you know, I see this in other parts of law where the attorney's fees are awarded to the person who prosecuted. Is this something that, uh, you're recommending?
Uh, I cannot feel good, sorry. Can you please speak louder?
Oh, yes. Um, so yeah, I was, uh, listening to your testimony and one of the things that you mentioned is that the attorney's fees might be a barrier to prosecution. Um, so are you, um, perhaps recommending that, um, should the prosecution be successful, uh, that attorney's fees be awarded, uh, to the person bringing, uh, the case?
Yeah, i- in, in OPA, in case we win the case, we are entitled to cause, including, uh, attorney's fees and, uh, lost, uh, profit. If we have, uh, if it's highly, highly likely that, uh, we will win the bid. Uh, of, of course, yes, but, but, uh, the point here is, if the hearing officer that is appointed by the OPA is not following the law, you know, then it should be prosecuted too. Because it's very clear. You know, that, that, that's, because just like, uh, what is written in the bill, it applies to hearing officer also. To, to OPA, it applies to referee, arbitrators. But, uh, but we, we need help. We need, we need, uh, legal assistance too. Because it's, it's hard to prosecute them and, and, uh, and win in the court for, for that matter. Uh, and, uh, but, uh, in order to prevent that, it's like what I said, since the OPA is elected by the people and other public officials, whoever they will appoint as hearing officer should be confirmed by the legislature to make sure that he is vetted by the public and he has the integrity to, to preside. Because, uh, what's happening is, is taking over the OPA's position or, or other, uh, high, high officials' position and he was never been examined. He should be confirmed by the legislature, at least if he's, uh, if he has the integrity to, to preside the case. The, 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 that's my, uh, pointer. Because if he, he will not follow the procurement law and just stick with his own, with his own law, with his own ideology, then, uh, it's a disgrace to the OPA, especially if he will not act correctly. And, and, and then I think that's one of the, uh, solutions there. The second is just abolish the OPA. And we'll just file direct to the, uh, Superior Court and, and pay the lawyer. So we don't have to pay, to pay the lawyer three times.
Okay, yeah, um, yeah, I appreciate your response. I, I know with the, a public auditor, I, yeah, I think, um, the, the way it's supposed to work is, uh, they, they have a de novo review. So I think that's one of the things uh, that, you know, the way, you know, when it's working, that's the important part. Um, when it, when it goes to the Superior Court, um, I think the, the ability to review the case, um, they just review what the OPA has reviewed. So, um, there might be some issues with that, that recommendation. But I do appreciate your, your testimony and, um, here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Titikli.
Thank you. I thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry. Um, just a couple of things just for the record, you know, um, the definition of the, um, the comment, I believe it was, a public contractor. Um, if we could grammatically or legally, it could be insufficient for the purpose of this bill. Um, we can also look at the excessive fines. Uh, this is for the Attorney General because I know Basil will listen to this tape afterwards to get the question. But also the excessive fines, uh, what other jurisdictions fall under that? I mean, if, you, sometimes a court see it as so excessive that, uh, for the, for the crime that it may not, um, it may be thrown out. There has been situations, it has to do with something else I've been working on. So if he can look at that, and then, of course, like I said earlier, other jurisdictions and federal laws guiding these fees, these fines, as well as misdemeanor cases to make it a third degree, from a misdemeanor to a third degree. I don't know whether jurisdictions have done that for official misconduct, but it might be worth looking into and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Titikli. Mr. La Songen, I, I grabbed my code book because something you said reminded me of another law, and I, and so I just want to point out to you, it's very similar situation, right? So, so currently, there's a law that authorizes enforcement of proper government spending, and it's Chapter Seven of Title V GCA, and it authorizes any taxpayer to sue the government, right? Or, or any officer of the government to join any officer, agent, contractor, or employee from expending money without proper appropriation, without proper authority illegally or contrary to the law, and to obtain a personal judgment in the courts against those officers and the government. So that's the taxpayer has standing to sue, and then there's another provision of the code, and similar to what Senator Perez is talking about, where it authorizes attorney's fees in favor of the taxpayer afterwards if, if the defendants are found liable, right? So yeah, so it doesn't necessarily solve your issue about how you're going to hire that attorney. He has to take it, I guess, on a contingency basis, if you might, and but it also very clearly states that the Attorney General or legal counsel for the government may represent individual defendants of those agencies, right? Or the, the officers of the agencies in defending such a lawsuit. Yeah, and so I can see that, it, it kind of very clearly has put in writing the predicament that you're describing, and, and you're describing especially procurement. And yeah, so we've seen that as well. We will consider to consider that. It is unfortunate, and I, my apologies to everyone that the Attorney General's not, not available, you know. It, it is an issue, and I'm going to have to discuss that with them again, because we do need input on this type of a bill. They're establishing penalties that have to be enforced by the Attorney General, and, you know, we want to make sure that we are, we are doing this properly. But I support the intent of this bill, of course, anything, especially we can prove that these penalties will deter such crime, we should, we should do it. So Senator Moilen, you may close on the bill.
Can I add something? I use that argument, standing to sue, so many times in the district court, even in the Superior Court, but the judge still rule, I like standing. I know, I knew that law, the taxpayers is standing to sue. Again, it was reversed. They didn't honor it.
Right, yeah, that was district court. Yeah, but that, unfortunately, that was district court. This is a, yeah. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. I'm not familiar with the details, but I appreciate that, and I would look at it. Thank you, Mr. La Songen.
It's also obverse the corruption in the white robe, in the black robes. You know, that's why we, we need to support the Senator Moilen's bill, because it obverse every public officials.
Right, but it doesn't cover your concerns yet. That's what I'm trying to think about, how would we cover your concerns about, you know, attorney's fees and things like that? Definitely, not yet. All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. La Songen. Senator Moilen, you may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Sifri, thank you very much also for staying till the end. Thank you, colleagues. Appreciate the conversation on this, as I find it quite interesting, and it is a good point in support of the Attorney General's Office that we're considering to find so many more cases specifically dealing with this bill that it could possibly overwhelm the Attorney General at that time. Hopefully, hopefully, we don't have that many cases of official misconduct or other things introduced by this bill, but it's understandable. I think we'll, we'll see the Attorney General's Office continue to get busy from regular crimes that we're seeing right, right now happening. And as you said, many of us have said, this is a deterrent, and we're hoping not to add to put these teeth into this, this bill, but it's there for that purpose. And in closing, I just want to read a little bit the Guam Public Accountability's Office here, who support the bill. And they had said, "We understand when we take an oath of office to support and defend the laws of the land, that it is an expectation we set an example. What this bill does is adds teeth to the penalties. Should a public official violate the people's trust, and it hits them in their pocket? Should they become convicted of crime in their official capacity?" Putting my auditor's hat on, which is written by Benjamin Cruz here, public auditor, putting my auditor's hat on, we have said this several times in our audits, where certain government officials or programs are not complying with the law, but there are no real penalties for the laws that this body creates. So this is what the bill hopes to do. And I think as a body, the legislature also has its own ethics committee, because we hold the purse, the purse of the taxpayers, and that's what we're here to protect and show our commitment to the people of Guam. So thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Sifri, thank you very much as well.
Thank you very much, Senator Moilen. There being no additional individuals to present further testimony, this committee will consider Bill 127-36 LS duly heard. The public hearing is now adjourned, and the time is 4:57 PM. César S. Masi, Torres. Take care, be safe.